All right, good evening. It is Wednesday, May 7th. And it's 6:30 PM. We have our North Burrows Day. Today in session. Um, our first up on our agenda is a recognition of retiree. But prior to that, I just want to quickly say, um, thank you to all of our teachers of our district and of the world because this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And we could not have educated students if it weren't for all of the teachers in our district and all the districts. So, thank you so much for all of your hard work. Continue the good, the good job. And, um, we are here because of all of the teachers. So, thank you so much. So, with that, we have a recog-, um, an early recognition of a retiree. Um, and Superintendent Martino is going to make our presentation.
So, I'll ask Andy Dowd to join me. Very rare that we recognize. Yes. Another night out. That's not our intent. We just wanted to thank you for your time and support. An excellent partner. Bob and John Call. Small but creative. Yeah.
Thank you so much for all you've done. Thank you for getting us, um, all of our paperwork in order and getting us, uh, to be able to be here tonight. Lauren, did you want to say? Did.
Yeah, just thank you so much. I think that you led a lot of us through this whole process of, you know, collecting signatures and learning the ropes. So, we really appreciate it.
Happy to do it.
Good chair. Andy, I'd like to thank you because you're the behind the scenes for what we do when we get into this position. Um, when I first began, we were at four schools voting. And I remember then you would come back to the town hall and we'd wait there with bated breath. And we'd see one voting box come in, then another one, and then another one. And we'd say, how much longer? And we'd wait with bated breath. And as we were there, we always would have a support person because we'd know who was going to be a victory for us or a victory for the other person. And I remember all the times when it wasn't a victory. You came up to whoever the candidate was voting in office. You had a demeanor that was kind and considerate and was very, very professional. And that is very important because that's a hard thing when people have been working for months on their paper, with signs, and you've just done it so professionally. And even for my candidate, I still answer questions. We're making sure that we get all the papers that we should get aligned and signed and get in besides the disclosure. Because I had to get the W, uh, the M19, M100. I'll have by Monday. And you just went through it and you just make it easy to us in communicating. So, what we do here is we're usually behind the scenes and helping us through the process. And as a former educator, you always want to learn that you have loved through this long process. And at the same time, it's professional, it's well-scheduled, it's just so. So, we have a lot to thank you for. The other school leaders, I think, and everyone's quick. Thank you for being here, John, because I was, uh, like, the ex-essential, I think, in charge. But also, you're great. I'm saying you're all the way for the entire week.
We won't tell you how it ends.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you so much, Andy. Okay, audience sharing. Seeing none. Uh, new business, we have our principal reports. Our principal card tonight. And then, um, assistant, is it assistant? Is there a place for assistant? Right. The D is going to be, I think, also about the under. We are excited for our Friday event coming up next week. Our annual PTO, the PTO, the PTO will be held on Friday, May 16th. This family-friendly event will feature games, food, a silent auction, and raffles. It's on the side of the spring and we look forward to watching many families. Today is an energetic start at Proctor. As with other schools here in the final stretch of end test testing, our third through fifth graders have shown incredible focus during each testing session. A shout-out to our lower-risk students for being such thoughtful cheerleaders by offering words of encouragement and also keeping our hallways quiet. Just yesterday, our kindergarten penguins had a fantastic time visiting the ecotarium. A big thank you to our parent and caregiver chaperones and to the PTO for generously funding the buses. Today, we participated in Walk to School Day. It's always wonderful to see students, families, and staff coming together in such a fun and active way to start the day. This Friday, our first graders will host their much anticipated animal home show. They've been hard at work preparing to share their learning and we're excited to welcome families in to celebrate their efforts. Over the next month, we look forward to many more events, so the new year is a special. And at P C, our Spring Walk to School Day, today went very well. Thank you to our staff volunteers. We appreciate our friends at the North Burrows department for allowing us to use their parking lot as a starting point and helping cross the city. We keep the area healthy. We are planning year-end activities and field trips. Our field trips will require our great teachers, parents, and administrators at PTO and our district nurses and staff. Everyone is very excited about their regular field trips and enrichment activities. Fourth graders will share their research projects with families at the annual state fair on May 21st. And we will host a spring art fair. Coming in here. And the USS Constitution. It'll be coming on Saturday. I would be delighted if you could come and join us. My last week, I was supposed to be in school. I was supposed to come and see my mom. I got a call from the, uh, all the women. May 15th, we have our fifth grade spring concert. And on the 3rd, we have a storytime between pets coming to report their experience. Our whole extension. There's no shortage of work and preparation for all of our staff. Lastly, a thank you to our dedicated staff during the day. We will be doing this day with lunch, snack, and everything. At Melican, there are also celebrating staff pictures. And we are thankful for our PTO for making these special for all staff. Sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are taking their end tests in the group for math and math. Eighth graders will take their science, tech, engineering end tests and our survey end tests. Baseball, softball, and track season are underway. We have 110 students participating this season, including 80 student athletes competing in the craft. Thank you for our coaches and for our parent volunteers. On Monday, our sixth graders will take part in the overnight trip to outdoor classroom, nature classroom in Branton. On Tuesday, second generation Holocaust students on camera will share their family's powerful story with our eighth graders. This is the third time that Dan will be joining us. Our annual music and art showcase is scheduled for May 19th at 6:00. World dancers return to Melican on May 22nd and 23rd. This annual tradition is a favorite for students as they learn and practice Latin dance. Eighth graders will attend Balance Adventure, Adventures on June 10th and 11th. Eighth grade field day takes place on June 12th. Eighth grade farewell dance takes place on June 13th. And eighth grade graduation is scheduled for September 7th. Is he everywhere? I'm just going to pause for a second. I've got a message that there's no audio on. Yeah, no, I know, that's what I said. Um, I just don't know, um, for minute purposes. Can we have some other recording? I just. Sorry about that. Thank you so much for your presentation. I was paying attention. Um, Joan, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, Michelle, can you give me the dates of the graduation date? From the, uh, 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 I didn't know if I have to ask permission through the administration or if I have to ask you.
We can reserve parking.
Yeah, it's outside. So, just if you let me know, I'll make sure you have a place to park.
Okay.
And I'll, and I'll put a chair out there. And that reserves seats.
No, that's okay. No preferential treat.
We'll get you a good seat.
Parking.
But parking is.
Parking is premium.
Oh, it is? If I should take it?
Well, I was, I was joking around saying, I wonder next year, being part of the PTO school or anything, as if I get to like jump the line or something like that.
Joan, we got a reserved spot.
I'm going to be like, they're going to be like, I'm sorry, you got to go to the back of the line. And then I'll get. I'll set up. Do you have a board?
Perfect. I'll camp out. All right, thank you.
Yes, Bryce.
I just want to say to the staff who organize and assist with the field trips all across all of the grades and across all of the locations which they go, um, just a massive thank you. You know, down to the nurses who help attend, uh, to the teacher aides, uh, to everybody who goes on those things that make them so incredible for the students that really like. I got, I have the privilege to be able to go on one recently and to just be able to see, um, how accessible our, our programs make these spaces that we go into. Um, just spectacular. So, I know that's, that's everybody, including people who aren't here, but thank you. It's phenomenal.
Um, and Mary, um, Michelle, if you could also relay back to the other principals and the staff that with this being Teachers Appreciation Week and also Nurses Appreciation Week, that we appreciate everything that we do and we know that their, the staffs is very well taken care of during this week from the PTO presentations that we have heard through the year and what they do almost every day.
There we go.
For the teachers. So, please, please relay our thanks to all the staff.
Thank you.
How's that, Bryce?
That's awesome.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Excited to be of my great grandmother, my 103 grandmother.
Ridiculous person wearing sunglasses because that was right in my eyes.
I didn't even, and when you looked there, I couldn't even see who was sitting there. Looked blinded.
Um, I'm excited about, I know a lot of things going on at Melican, um, a lot of great things coming up. And I'm excited for a lot of them coming up and stuff like that. And, uh, I'm excited that we were able to pivot the sixth grade field trip, um, from having to go two separate trips. It's pivoted to just one trip because of enrollment and, um, but, you know, at least some kids are supposed to. Um, questions that I've heard from the community are, in the community being my household, is a seventh grader's going on a field trip and when are they going? I'm like, I don't know. I don't know. Um, so that's one of the things that we, we never get any, okay. Um, so that's.
Yes, there is a field trip planned. Do you have the date, Rachel?
May 28th, I think.
Yeah, they're going to Patriot Place.
Okay.
For STEM Day.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I told her. She's like, I, I don't think you're, I don't think you got that right, Mom. It hasn't happened. I was like, I know it hasn't, but I, I'm told it's coming, so I don't. All right. So, no other questions. Uh, do we want to move on to Yonder Pouches?
Sure, I'm happy to talk about it. Um, so, um, I, we are very pleased with, um, our Yonder Pouch implementation. And I know that you are aware of some of this. I know you've been sort of kept up to date, but I wanted to give you a little bit of background, which I know that, again, you mostly already know. But, um, we started by applying for the address student cellphone used pilot grant all the way back in the summer of 2023. And Stephanie Reinhorn helped us out a lot with that. And so, we were very happy to get that. Um, we put together a cellphone committee, um, and we were able to purchase the Yonder Pouches back in the summer of 2024. And then we implemented the pouches, uh, just in October, just this past October. So, again, I know you know much about that, but this is sort of what we focused on from Sep-, late September, um, until the 21st, when we actually went ahead and started using the Yonder Pouches at Melican. Uh, we made sure to really communicate a lot with our staff, give staff the training. Uh, we wanted to make sure that families were as, you know, aware as they could be about our plans. And so, we gave a caregiver information night, October 8th. And then we, Michelle and I, were able to, uh, offer office hours with us for any families who wanted to come and speak to us, you know, more specifically about, um, you know, what we were planning for Yonder. Um, we were, did a little bit of training, uh, and practice with our students on the 15th and 16th. We just did that in classrooms. I think it was social studies classrooms. And, um, students were able to try out the Yonder Pouches, sort of practice with them so that when we went ahead and launched, hopefully, they didn't have any trouble with it. And we were lucky and happy to see that they didn't have much trouble. So, on the 21st and since then, we've been using the Yonder Pouches at Melican. Um, we did, we are doing Yonder a little bit different than the Yonder company recommends. Um, we, um, in the mornings, we have big buckets of Yonder Pouches. And they're set up in the cafeteria and in the, um, the front lobby, right in front of the front doors. And as students come in, if they have a cellphone or a smartwatch or AirPods, they put those items into the Yonder Pouch, lock them up, and head along on another day. Um, so this is a little different. Yonder recommends that each student get their own individual pouch, but we're sort of sharing the pouches. Um, and we found that it's working pretty well. Um, we do have students whose families have shared with us that they either don't have a cellphone or AirPods or smartwatch. And so, they are on a no-device list and as they're coming, we're getting, we know they're from the, uh, house, so we just sort of check them off. They probably hit the line and they go straight to, um, start their day. But yes, some students just keep their phones at home if they have them. Um, and we do have a couple of different options for students who need something a little bit different. We do have some Velcro pouches that only 13 of our students use at Melican. But they have to, they use them in case they, there's students for whatever reason who need to be able to access their devices, um, more quickly. And then there are 22 students at Melican who have their designated pouch that they use every day. They take it back and forth from home to school. Uh, but again, only 22 of those students. Um, they either didn't want to share or, um, for whatever reasons, didn't, didn't think that that was a good option for them, so they have their own. Um, so that's the morning. And then students, at the end of the day, we have little magnet openers. We have them installed on the wall. They kind of just screw on. So, um, we run around, make sure that there are openers for students as they walk out. And we actually have a couple of handheld openers, opening devices that we, um, will just walk around and help the kids, hey, they fit, open their pouch and then they put it into the bin, the same bins that they had on their way in. Um, we have been staggering dismissal a little bit just so that we didn't have a logjam of students who were trying to race out of the building, open their pouch and, and head out. So, um, that's been really working well. Um, so seeing that we share the pouches, um, I am really, I, I'm committed to making sure that they're as clean as they can be and there is a way, you can just wash them in the washing machine. Um, they air dry, but I have done that for all the pouches, um, in the winter break. Then we did, I did them again in February and then again in the spring break. And then I'll clean them again this summer, um, just for germ purposes and among other things. Um, and yes, so the, uh, because again, we're sharing the pouches, I do check them, or the administrative assistants in our building are really helpful too. I check them every day to make sure we don't have any broken ones, um, or sort of damaged ones. I just don't want to have them in the rotation. Or sometimes the kids will return them and they're locked, so I want to open them up before the next day. Um, and oftentimes, uh, teachers, just in their classrooms, will just do sort of periodic checks. Um, they'll ask the students, just take out your pouch. They'll put them on the desk. Teacher will go around, just make sure that everybody's using their Yonder Pouches and that they're, that they're working well. So, we really had high hopes, um, when we started the cellphone committee. Um, I think, I remember we were like, our dream, our wish is to have a cellphone preschool. And so, we went through so many different thoughts about how we could make that happen. And, um, Yonder was the, the, the method that we thought would be the best. And so, we're very happy to see, um, we did survey staff. And before implementation, we asked, um, you know, do you think that student use of cellphones is a problem at Melican? Eighty-three percent of people who responded said yes. And then we just asked them again, same question. Do you think of student use of cellphones at Melican as a problem now with Yonder Pouches? And only 6% of the staff said yes. So, it's been really, uh, positive as far as, um, staff responses. Um, again, we, we, our main goal is just trying to help students have a much less distracted experience when they're at school. So, we, again, asked, uh, staff to give us some feedback. Um, and I won't read all of these, but these were just some of the comments that sort of stood out to me. Um, so nice to not have to constantly worry about students having their phones and what they might be doing with them. Taken a big weight off my shoulders. Um, people say they love them. They've made a huge impact on student attention and engagement. Students are much less distracted. I liked that idea. Everything seems better. It's great. Uh, attention, focus, less meeting up in the hall after texting or recording things without permission. Um, and so, I think something we hear a lot is that, um, teachers appreciate not having to have the negative interactions with their students about putting their devices away. It was, um, that was definitely a challenge. Um, students seem a lot more focused. They seem to interact with their peers a lot more. Um, I like this comment about students got used to the routine fast. Michelle and I spent a lot of time thinking about the logistics of, you know, sharing the pouches and how that would work and kids coming in. And, you know, we thought about every different possibility. What's going to happen on a rainy day? You know, how do we, snowy outside? How do we get kids in, um, as quickly as we can? And it's worked pretty well so far. Um, having said that, uh, we know that there is some work that we need to continue to do with Yonder. Uh, we'll, you know, occasionally we'll have students put false items into their pouches to try to circumvent. Um, sometimes we do know that the Yonder Pouches, uh, can be damaged. Um, there is a way to do it and you can go on YouTube if you want to try to figure that out. But, um, that's not what we want our students to do. Um, but yes, we do know that that happens, but just trying to discourage that as much as possible. And truly, I think, you know, at this point, as of this afternoon, I think we had like 47 broken pouches that are like really out of commission, like can't be repaired, um, which honestly, I don't think is quite that bad on, based on how many we initially purchased. Um, we encourage students to take their pouches, so phone in pouch, pouch in backpack, um, because, because we share them, we don't have them labeled, so occasionally kids can mix up their cellphones with other kids. Um, so just trying to remind students as often as possible, keep their, their, um, Yonder Pouch in their backpack. And I think when it's out of sight, out of mind too, that's helpful. Um, some teachers asked about the staggered dismissal, you know, do we still need to do that? Kids are pretty quick with opening up the pouches and moving on through their, uh, you know, getting outside to the buses. So, um, that's something I think we'll think about again. Um, and yeah, sometimes kids are distracted at the end of the day because they know they're going to be able to open up their Yonder Pouch. Um, but, um, and then lastly, just this idea, sometimes the smartwatches, I think generally they are much less distracting, um, but still sometimes, you know, we, we do encourage kids to put their, their, uh, smartwatches into the Yonder Pouches. So, some of those are still getting through, but I think generally, um, I, well, I would say without hesitation, it's, it's been a really positive thing at Melican. I, I'm very proud of, um, our teachers and the district for, you know, allowing us to give this a chance. And I, I think it's been pretty successful.
Thank you so much. Um, I know firsthand how it is with the kids and stuff like that. Um, does, I do have some questions, but does anybody else have questions first? Do you want, uh, we'll start at the end of the table and then come down. Kristen?
Uh, yeah, thank you for, you know, to the committee and all of you, excuse me, for making that happen. It's obviously been such a positive impact. And I've seen with my own kid, the positive impact it's had. Um, I'm so glad this was implemented. I couldn't stand it when we, you know, had to go through the whole phone thing. Uh, the one question I had was, it seems like a lot of work for you going through all those pouches every day, washing them, which I appreciate. Thank you for doing that, about washing them a couple of times, checking the, um, for broken ones, et cetera. So, I'm one, just wondering, if Yonder recommends them all having their own pouch and that would be another way to hold them accountable for broken pouches, right? Or something, they might not be able to get away with banging it on things to try and get it open. Well, why did you go with the shared method? And I'm just wondering what the advantage was.
I think a couple of different reasons. You can feel free to jump in, Michelle. I think one, um, we really felt, um, strongly like it's, it's a, it's a school thing. It's a school supply. Um, we didn't want families to think that we were imposing anything on, you know, outside of school use. Um, I, I think, um, and again, I'm sure we could figure this out based on other schools. Um, but I think that we keep them, that, um, we, we're more careful with keeping them in good shape than maybe some kids would be if they had their own. But I hear what you're saying and I honestly, I think the initial reason why we decided to go with this is, um, I'm in communication with a, uh, one of the assistant principals at Wickham Middle School in Marlboro. And they had tried with everybody having their own pouch. And they decided in their second year of implementation to do with the community shared ones. Um, and so, I think that's sort of where we came up with the idea. Um, but again, I think that we can certainly, we are open and thinking a lot about whether it might be a better, more effective way to send them home with the kids. But, um, that was sort of our thinking.
Yeah, I think, um, what, uh, Wickham Middle School had shared is that they had more that were lost and damaged when the kids were responsible for bringing them back and forth. And then they had to call home and then they had to try to get reimbursement for the ones that were missing and lost. So, I think we felt like we had a little bit more control over that. So, I think we're open to trying different things, but I think that, um, compared to sort of how many other schools have lost and damaged, we felt like we were in a little bit better spot. So, I think that's kind of why we were, we went with it. We kind of learned from other schools, I think, experiences.
Okay, yeah, no, it's obviously been a huge success. So, just, I mean, I'm not trying to tell you what Jared's wondering with the.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
You know, we, you know, how much work do you want to put in? What is less work and what works better for you?
Yeah.
Going down.
Yeah.
Um, what's the part of all for students who do not have a phone?
So, they, uh, we sent out a Google form at the beginning of the implementation, asking families, you know, if kids don't have phone. Um, we put together a list and then those students, it's, there's actually two different lines as they come in.
they come into the building, and the kids who don't have phones just go over those teachers who have the list, and then they'll just say their names, they check them off, and they just go on their way.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the previous presentations that you did even last year. And picking up on the previous presentation, I remember there was a parent that had a concern and spoke during, you know, the audience sharing, and had a concern because of her child having a peanut allergy, and what was going to be the scenario for that. So I'm glad to see that there's twenty-two students that you have made accommodations for, because I think somebody who has type one diabetes may have to use their phone, and so to check their, their rate of their sugar levels. So I think it's really good that we have reached out, and you have more students in taking care of the needs of the parents and the concerns. When you did do this in September, it was the whole school that was doing this. Now that we have a new fifth grade class coming in, what is going to be the protocol, and how are you going to do that? Because the sixth, seventh, and eighth, they're used to it now, but you have a new fifth grade class.
Those kids don't have ones anymore, so.
Oh, not fifth, sixth grade. I'm sorry, sixth grade.
Well, fifth grade can't use.
So Joan.
You're going to have a new sixth grade class coming in.
So our plan is to communicate with the incoming sixth grade families a couple of times over the summer, like we usually do, and part of that communication will include sort of our practice around yonder pouches. So if students are bringing devices to school, this is our protocol, and this is the plan. We're going to start day one next year, so we will also work with our sixth graders at Sixth Grade Orientation, which is the Wednesday before everybody, all the other students come back, to sort of explain it, show it to them. We actually think it's going to be easier with them than it was like with this year's eighth graders, because of these, this year's eighth graders, it was brand new for. I think to Kelly's point, the fifth graders are not allowed to have their phones and devices at school, so I actually think it's going to be a lot easier with the incoming sixth graders. But we do understand that, you know, and it's, we're very positive and patient with them. I think it's just kind of how we do business, and I think we'll be able to bring the sixth graders on board pretty quickly.
Okay. Another question I had is, you answered it, and that was that there are forty-seven replacements. So when you first instituted the yonder pouches, that was purchased through a grant, correct?
Partially.
Yes.
Partially. So what is the replacement cost for each one? Price, and are you going to be looking for another grant, or is this going through the budget process?
Replacement cost is thirty dollars per device. So we purchased six hundred at the beginning. We actually have five, about five hundred and sixty students right now. So next year we'll have a little bit more, because our incoming sixth grade is a little bit bigger than our outgoing this year's eighth grade. So we have the money in the budget to replace the ones that are beyond repair. There are some in, in the school budget, there are some that are sort of out of commission that we still are going to, we're not completely convinced that they can't be fixed. So we're going to spend some time this summer working at it.
The pliers, it works.
Yeah, we just.
We can revise, bring them back to life.
I don't know if you need a big needle and thread or what, some of those threads. And then the last thing is, with anything that comes in, you have your first year, everything seems to work really well with what you've done, because you did a lot of planning through this process and a lot of thought. Is there any other new things that you have thought about that you would like to implement next year to maybe make it go a little smoother? I mean, because it seems like it's working very well right now.
I do think one of the things that's been helpful is, I think that this, the entire initiative was really generated by student, from staff feedback. So I think that teachers identify a problem or an issue, and I think that teachers were involved in the cellphone committee with Gretchen leading them, and so to me, this has really been a teacher-generated initiative. Yes, we have done a lot of the logistical planning, but I think all the staff is really on board. So like at the end of the day, for example, there are several places where kids can unlock, and there are staff members at each of those places in the morning as kids are coming in. So I think that the staff will have some ideas, and we have gotten a little bit of feedback from them about kind of how we might want to sort of spread out some of the places where kids are picking up their pouches in the morning. But I don't think we're going to make some huge changes. I think we're going to start the year sort of how we're ending it, with a couple small tweaks, and we'll spend the summer kind of thinking about that, just to make it a little bit more efficient. And then I think we will, we will get some more feedback from the staff as we get going again. But I think it's, in large part, the success has to do with Gretchen's leadership, and teacher buy-in, and teacher support and commitment to really making the school as device-free as possible during the learning hours. And I think that Gretchen highlighted a lot of the positives, and I think that some things that, that we didn't even really think about are so significant. Just the fact that kids are not getting into bullying situations or arguments via text during the day. I mean, if they are, it's happening, and we don't know about it, because they're not supposed to have them. So the amount of time that, that, that we haven't been needing to spend on sort of responding to those kinds of social interactions has been significant. So I think some of what we want to do next year is take some more data, so that we, we have kind of a better sense, data-wise, of how, how things are moving in a positive direction. So again, I think we'll probably make some small changes here and there, but I think that we will end pretty similarly to, I mean, start pretty similarly to how we're ending the year.
Okay, thank you. Gretchen and Michelle, thank you very much. And I think Gretchen, one thing that you didn't look, that had to be done, was taking them home and washing them. So I remember that in the first presentation, but thank you for going over and above. Thank you very much.
It's a labor of love for Gretchen, and I will say, she goes through almost every pouch every day. We do have help from the admin assistants, but like, but it's a good time for Gretchen to meet a debrief about the day, so we would probably be talking anyway. I sometimes help, but not that often. Gretchen's so good at it, and she definitely has a system. It's a labor of love, but I think we believe very strongly in it, and we have seen the impact, so.
Thank you so much.
And we have a washing machine at school, so I use that.
I have visions of you taking home a big bag of these home, and then bringing them back.
I'll tell you, I, I don't have a place that's big enough to spread them all out, because I have to air dry them. So I put them out on the cafeteria tables. This is more than you want to know, but anyway.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's more details.
Do you have dish racks? I can get you dish racks.
That would be great.
Seriously, I'll bring you some dish racks if you really want them.
Sounds great. I'll talk with you.
See, that's, could be any new implementations?
I like dish racks.
Because you can put them upside down, right?
Right, yeah. Perfect.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Very much related, and thank you for the questions prior, because it answered some of mine, but just kind of building on those, those ideas, I can totally tell Gretchen that like, you will will this thing into existence, and, and all the credit for, for doing so. I think the thing we're hearing and just wanting to flag is, is the sustainability of, of, of the labor of love, right? Like the idea that you're trying, this is such a good thing, like in general. So how do we then think of ways to have this, as Kristen had said, you know, easier and more manageable for you over time? Because as much as I, I, I actually didn't think of your point, your perspective, and why you guys didn't go with the normative behavior is recommended by yonder, but that totally makes sense. I think the part that, that I'd be curious about is another, you lost forty-seven roughly out of six hundred in a calendar year, almost, a full calendar year, let's call it fifty. The ones that went home, what was their burn rate?
Question, yeah.
And then, and then just, you know, you may be better off understanding that, you know, with what we do and the practices we have, maybe it's a little extra, but those are the practices we've adopted, that we can sustain a total replacement cycle of every six years.
Right.
Because if that, if fifty, you know, if you're going to go down that track, so and I'm, some will be up and some will be down, but I would be interested, understanding your perspective, why other districts would still go with yonder's recommendation.
Yeah, yeah. It's a good point. I think, to, and I don't know if this will be how it works out, but I think one of the things that we really like about the yonder is that it takes out that negative interaction with teachers. And I wonder if, you know, you're forgetting your yonder pouch, is that just another sort of thing to start your day?
Oh, I totally can see all of that, absolutely. Yeah, I'm just, it's more just like, you know, I, it's, it's both, right? Like there's an opportunity for responsibility and development and accountability, which I, there's great arguments for, obviously, but you've got a million examples of that in your day-to-day. And the, the sustainable function of the, the system in your space over time. Yeah, I would just be curious, like, a replacement of six hundred packages at thirty dollars per package every six years? That's, that's not that bad, given, what, eleven to fourteen-year-olds?
We think it will be better next year and year two. We don't think we're going to lose this many.
Or a decrease in that, in that, in that, yeah, that loss, yeah. But thank you.
So I agree. A lot of my questions were kind of touched upon. The broken ones, since we just ended with that. Originally, we were talking about charging the families who, you know, is it kind of those forty-six, is it a loss because you don't know whose pouch it was, because there's no thing? I'm wondering if there is some way of leaving them at school, but somehow having some sort of identity matching them to the kids, so then that's another way to kind of track them. I don't know if there's some.
Take a long time to do that coming in.
I don't know.
Like getting them, but like getting them into the school.
Yeah, I mean, or if there was a place, like, I mean, well, it would be helpful if the kids actually used their lockers.
Well, that would be.
You know what I mean? Like that would be a thing, like you leave it in locker, you know, leave it there, pick it up, you know, so, and then they're kind of tied to a kid, so then that way, it is more things. But I can imagine those forty-six, I mean, can imagine some of them were, especially in the beginning, purposely done. But at the end of the day, you just kind of throw it in, and you don't know until they're gone, you know? So it's kind of.
I think it's a good point, and I think last summer, when we were trying to do some planning, we were wondering if there was a way for us to do that, where every student has one with, with a name on it, and every day you come in, it's your pouch, you leave it at the end. And we were trying to figure out logistically how we could make that happen, because I think you're right, that would hold everyone accountable.
And I, and I would also probably assume that a high volume were probably kids who had cellphone usage prior to this year in school, and now they don't. I mean, like the older kids, probably, you know, versus the younger kids who, you know, never had them last year anyways. Other schools, any, any talk amongst the district to getting Trotier on board? I know that was a big thing, that some of the kids at the Melican were like, "Well, it's not fair, Trotier doesn't have to do it, and we do," you know?
No, I would just, you know, echo the committee's remarks around the undertaking amount of effort and planning, coordination, the buy-in on teachers' part, and the buy-in on families. I think it's been a great success. This is the first school in our district to pilot the yonder pouches, and I think it is putting pressure on Trotier to investigate and look at it much closer.
Maybe at the state level soon enough.
So I think that it's been a great success, a ton of work. I think what's nice to hear is the impact it's having on the classroom and the teacher's ability to really focus on what they do well, which is teach, and what students do well, which is learn. So I think it's, you know, for all that time you put in, I think it's resulted in time on learning, which is great, so thank you. And I'll talk to the South Side of the School Committee.
Yeah. Just one thing, so I know my daughter, for, out of the whole year, it was only one time she didn't unlock it, and it was because she was dismissed early and, and forgot to do it, so I had to go back to school and get it done. Thankfully, somebody was still there. But has, has anybody else, has that happened to anyone else that they've?
We have had a couple, they'll come back later.
Yeah, because I know there was a talk originally, like, oh, maybe we leave one at the police station or something.
We still are open to that.
But it, but it didn't seem to be a problem. It didn't seem to be like a.
Wasn't really, hasn't been. I think there was one parent who called me, or we were talking about something else, she goes, "Yeah, he didn't unlock it." And I said, "Too bad, you can do it tomorrow." So I think either people will bring them back, or, I think most of the time, kids remember. Because they're so connected to the device. And also the.
The routine.
The building, like, they can get in at night, they can, you know, there's custodians or so. But I think that we are very open to having a device at the police station or someplace in town.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't seem like you probably need it if, if there hasn't been a huge this year, yeah. I said, it was the one time, and she left early, and.
Yeah, mine was one time as well, so she managed to get it. I was like, "Don't you doubt?"
Okay, so charging the forty-six, one of the forty-six, don't worry, you'll be getting.
No, she has her own, so it's.
Oh, okay, probably, so it's still with it.
I was like, "Fine, I'm going to drive you back," and by the time I came back in the room, she's like, "Oh, I got."
I got it, yeah.
Found a magnet, started working it, like, now your problem's solved, I guess.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Lauren, you said you had one more follow.
I remember when you gave the first presentation, that must have been about a year or so ago, you had mentioned that, I think it was Whitcomb had given you some information just about how social interactions among peer groups had increased, and I was wondering if you had any data about that. We saw that the classroom, you know, it's definitely has been changed positively. What about social interactions, either in the lunchroom or in the classroom itself?
I think one of the most noticeable, well, it's noticeable everywhere, but when the kids come in the morning, some of them may be playing a game on their Chromebook, but they're usually playing with another student, nobody is on a device. And I think last year, again, I wish we had the data, but I would say at least half were on a device. I think even walking down the halls, kids would be kind of looking at their phones, there's none of that. So they're, they're just up and much more social, because they're looking around, definitely in the classrooms, as we said. As soon as they get their device, their devices, at the end of the day, they are down on their way to the bus. So, but anecdotally, we've definitely noticed more social interaction, and just more social awareness, which has been really nice. And families have been really, really supportive. I think we have kids who will come down, and they'll say, "I really need to text my mom." We unlock it for them. Like, we're not trying to not help them communicate, we want them to communicate with their families, whether it's using the old-fashioned phone or us unlocking their phone. So I think kids are, they understand that. So, but we have just, I feel like that they're just in general more engaged with one another.
Thank you. Lauren.
And then my last thing was just about, like, I know they, they have special, I've, I've talked to the yearbook editors, they have special yearbook members get special cameras that they can take and walk around with, and they have like permission, because, you know, that's like part of the thing, it's like photos and stuff, too, yeah, like you always do it. Is there any thought or things about days that are like fun to let the kids use their phones for memorable, memorable type things? I just, I think back to the fall when we had that obstacle day, like, that would have been, I know kids could have taken a lot of fun photos, just for keepsake purposes, you know? And then.
Yeah, we're open to visiting.
Great day, I think, coming up or something, right?
Yeah. I think one of the things that historically does happen at some of those events is sometimes there are videos taken and shared without kids' permission. So I think there's always a fine line there. At the farewell dance for eighth graders, they'll have their phones, that's fine. At graduation, they'll have their phones. But I think that, to me, a benefit of the pouches is not having kids who don't want their photos or their videos, and being made fun of on Snap or wherever. So, but I think we're certainly open to that. Field trips, things like, you know.
Yeah, I know, because that's just the, the fun times that, you know.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for this presentation, I really appreciate it. Sorry to throw you in the box, I did ask for it. I was like, "I want to hear about it again."
Gretchen was happy to share.
Yeah. It was, you know, I think I cornered you one time at the PTO, was like, you know, "So can we talk about this?"
We talked about having yonder pouches at school.
I think that would be great.
Something that new chair.
Lock up your device.
The new chair can.
The new chair can implement it.
Right.
New chair chairs.
Sure. TV. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And next we have Megan Hilty presenting for ELA.
And as always, you're welcome to stay, but no offense if you want to leave.
I think we'll stay for Megan.
Perfect.
I think we're good to go. All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Megan Hilty, the pre-K through eight ELA coordinator, and I'm thrilled to be here tonight to share a lot of celebrations with you about ELA happenings in pre-K through eight, since I saw you a little bit over a year ago. And you saw, hopefully, in your presentation packet that we included the elementary ELA instructional vision and also the middle school ELA instructional vision. I'm not going to read them out loud, they both are text-heavy, but just wanted to share with you that these are the products of collaboration of our curriculum and review councils. Our elementary curriculum and review council, as you know, started this process almost three years ago, and part of the work before we launched into actually looking at potential curricular instructional resources was to develop a shared vision of really what we are hoping for our students of North Borough to achieve by the time they graduate. So our vision, inspired by Portrait of a Graduate, but really writing it specifically to how, how do we build literacy skills at the elementary level to slowly, over time, build towards Portrait of a Graduate? So, the two visions, the elementary and the middle school, and then the middle school vision was drafted almost two years ago when we started the middle school instructional resource review for ELA. So, again, a collaborative vision across, in the middle school, both cases, across North Borough and South Borough, collaborating on these visions. Essentially, the two visions share, even though they were drafted a year apart from each other, they share very common, common threads of really wanting to engage students with integrated ELA throughout their ELA experience, meaning, rather than having sort of fragmented reading and writing and speaking and listening experiences, really having those, those ELA experiences being integrated in what feels like a really authentic way, using real texts, primary sources, and making sure that the texts and the resources students are engaging with are really diverse, including those windows and mirrors that are so essential. And another trend was being evidence-based, of really trying to have a vision where the instructional practices we're using with students are based on what we know works best for promoting literacy at all grade levels. So those are the visions in a nutshell. It might have been faster if I just read them. I don't know. We'll never know. But just to take you back to this visual, I believe this was shared last month with the math presentations as well. This is a visual that we have used consistently at, in North Borough and South Borough through our curriculum and instruction review process, just to move through the stages in a consistent way. And I think you're presenting in the future about this, so I don't want to steal your thunder. But those phases of the curriculum implementation, of course, initially before we select a program or a resource, we, we learn, we prepare, and then we do a lot of investigation, selection, and then we launch. And in both elementary and middle school, this year, we are in the final stage of curriculum implementation, the stage that lasts the longest, which is the implement and monitor stage. And that's what I will, I'm thrilled to share some updates with you tonight about our implementation and monitoring at the K to five level with our curriculum and also middle school. So, in kindergarten through grade five, we are finishing year two of implementation of Witten Wisdom. Witten Wisdom is an integrated ELA curricular resource that is teaching speaking, listening, reading, writing, and through that also vocabulary, grammar. It's not teaching the foundational skills, so we continue to use our separate Project Read Phonics and Haggerty Phonemic Awareness to teach those foundational skills, which is like learning how to actually read the words and spell the words and, and that, those, those pieces of literacy. This year, teachers are aiming to complete modules three of Witten Wisdom, and they continue to use authentic texts. So when I say authentic texts, I'm really referring to books that you can find at the local bookstore or you go to the public library, and they're, they're readily available. And the students, it's, teachers have shared that the students are really becoming familiar with the routines and structures of the curriculum, especially seeing the students come from last year, having different structures of writing or different protocols for how to have conversations, how to analyze texts together in groups, or how to have Socratic seminar discussions, for example. Kids were already kind of familiar with that. So when teachers went to implement those routines and structures this year, kids just sort of rolled with it, which was really, really exciting to see. This year, our writing at the, or, sorry, our training at the beginning of this year with Witten Wisdom focused on the writing component of the curriculum and how to gain more confidence with the implementation of that. So that's Witten Wisdom. And here are a couple of pictures. These were actually taken at Lincoln Street, where we happen to be. This is, these are fourth graders. This was taken towards the end of module two, which is a, a module about survival in the wild. Not that it's trying to prepare any of us for that, but it's a very engaging topic. So students learn about survival skills, reading some informational, you know, texts about that, and then they also read a fictional sort of survival in the wilderness book. So they celebrated their year, their end-of-module writing task, which was to write a narrative survival story. So really a creative fictional piece, using the information they'd learned about survival in the wilderness. And as you can see, they had sort of like a camp-out themed day. But the kids on the right are actually their peer reviewers, so they were reading each other's writing, and then they had a certain protocol to use to respond to their, their peers' writing. You see some of their comments on sticky notes, and I just love the joy on their faces, you know, giving that, that peer, that peer feedback. That was a special celebration. So, beyond Witten Wisdom, in fourth and fifth grades, we also this year implemented a new resource to, to build on students' phonics and spelling experiences. So you'll see a picture here of the text that is, guides our work. It's called Phonics and Spelling Through Phoneme Graphy Mapping. And we also have a bunch, we have other activities that we use in tandem with this. But essentially, what we want to do in fourth and fifth grade is we want to continue systematic and really direct teaching of how words work, just at a much more complex level than what we do in grades K through three. So we pick up where kids finish in third grade, at the end of third grade in terms of phonics, and then we, we really start to transition more into teaching Greek and Latin roots, thinking about suffixes, prefixes. So how do words work? How, how do we build words? How do we take them apart? And what do they mean? And as you can imagine, that really builds nicely, so when they're really doing text analysis in the rest of their ELA block, they have, they have, they, it's like they have a running start to figure out these more complex words. So you see a little picture here. This is what phoneme graphing mapping actually is. It's, it is a simple thing, it's with a complex name, but these students practice a skill that they learn in grades K through three, but it's that idea of you hear a word and you think about, what are all the sounds in the word? And how am I using print to represent those sounds? And we can do that at a very simple level, like with a word like "pat." We know that pat, p- at, and what are the letters that represent those sounds? But we also can do it with more complex words, like up here, you see the words typhoon, tycoon, rooster. So that, that's really the gist of this. And the feedback so far has been that students are becoming really accustomed to the routines and are, are really engaged in the word study, like the, the, thinking about word meanings and having fun with that.
Is, is it the teachers that are doing this mapping, or the kids? The kids do this?
The, the picture in the bottom? The kids, this would be the kids, with, with modeling, of course, initially. Yeah, so it would be the teacher would be maybe saying a word, and then the students are writing it and thinking about what sounds they hear and what, what letters represent those sounds. So, moving on to middle school, and we have our middle school representation back there. And we are in year one of implementing the EL curriculum resource. And this year, in grades six, seven, and eight, we are, all grade levels are getting through module three. We will complete module three in some places and almost complete it in others. Similar to Wit and Wisdom, EL integrates all areas of ELA, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and with that, of course, the grammar and the vocabulary. It's similar to Wit and Wisdom, uses authentic texts and primary sources, offers windows and mirrors in those texts. A lot of students can see themselves represented. And the routines and structures are very similar to Wit and Wisdom. So, they, for example, Socratic seminar is something that happens regularly in Wit and Wisdom in K through five, and it's also a, a routine in the, in the EL experience. So it's been really exciting to see the, the students at the middle school, you know, they have their workbooks, and they're, they have to see their rich conversations about the texts and gathering evidence together. A few months ago, I walked into a Socratic seminar, and it was just really exciting to see the Melican kids gathered in a circle, and the teacher was not front and center. You know, the students were really facilitating their conversation and citing evidence from the text as they made their points, and sort of went back and forth and built on each other's points with transitional phrases and so forth, so it's, there's a lot to celebrate there. And I have a couple pictures here from Melican. So you see the picture on the left, it's a little hard to see, but these two students are standing next to a poster, Characteristics of Upstanders. So this is, these are eighth graders who are studying, you know, upstanders in the book that they are reading. And then you see students in pairs and small groups working on some text analysis, and they're recording evidence in their physical workbooks. Here are some more Melican students enjoying the fine weather outside. You see them working in groups and in pairs, say it's similar task. And you see somebody standing next to a poster entitled Ethical People, because one of the things that drew us to EL was that EL is not only an ELA curriculum, but it really is also building that social emotional piece, and character, character building is a component of the instructional learning targets. And I thought this was a nice, a nice picture to represent that. And just something to highlight, this is probably my favorite slide because it has one of my favorite visuals of all time. This is a, a visual metaphor that was created by a researcher in 2001, Hollis Scarborough. It's very out there now in the sort of social media literacy world. It's, it's pretty recognizable at this point. I chose that image up here because Scarborough's Reading Rope is a visual metaphor of all of the components that students need in order to become proficient readers. And it sort of takes it down into two ma- major strands, the language comprehension strand. So we need to really have understanding of language spoken and, you know, if we hear language spoken to us, the ability to produce language, and, you know, all those components of language, the grammatical components, the vocabulary components, the, the, you know, the subtleties of language, metaphors, figurative language. And we also need to under, have the language of text, like, how, how is a social conversation different than what I might read in a newspaper article? So all those are sort of part of the language comprehension strand. But then we also have the word recognition strand, which is when you're actually identifying words. So you're able to read words, lift them, and figure out what they are. So we need all of those pieces to come together to be proficient readers. And the reason I chose this visual for this is because there has been so much collaboration with these ELA implementations across departments, and it's really something to celebrate, because as educators, we all have our areas. Maybe we're classroom teachers or supporting multilingual learners, or specialty is, you know, being a reading specialist. But at the end of the day, we're all working together to, to, to build proficient readers, right? And we know that all these strands are essential, so we are all collaborating at all times to figure out how can we each contribute to the development of these strands in our, in our readers and writers. So just a couple things, a few things to highlight. The K through five student support team has done a lot of collaboration on modifying Wit and Wisdom tasks according to IEPs. And the K to eight Castle PLC work, we met earlier this year to talk about literacy foundational skills and how we can make appropriate modifications based on IEPs. We've had, run a middle school series this year with the student support department on identifying and supporting struggling readers. And finally, the K through twelve, well, really, I should say K through eight, it's North Borough. Our ELD team has been collaborating with our elementary reading specialist team because so many of our students are shared and really talking about how to best, you know, how to best support those students by, by continuous collaboration. So, finally, something else to celebrate is our, earlier this year, I guess January, late January, we were awarded the PRISM grant through the state, and we were one of fifteen districts in the state to be awarded this. It's part of Governor Healy's Literacy Launch Initiative, and this is the first grant in that initiative. And it's a five-year grant. Though we were awarded at the end of January, technically, we are finishing year one, sort of. So year one is a little bit less than one year quantitatively, but next year will be year two. But essentially, what PRISM is, is it's a five-year early literacy grant to help us take where we are as a district. We have so many high-quality instructional materials in place, but to really support the refinement of the structures and the materials we have in place. So, right now, we have a leadership team established. We have meetings this month, the next month, and then we will have the team go into next year to do a system scan, which is a fancy word for basically figuring out what's going really well and what are our areas for, for growth, our opportunities for growth. And then from that, we'll sort of develop an action plan, and then we'll go from there with the support of our coach that is funded through this grant and see what resources and what, you know, instructional suggestions they have for us. So it's very exciting, and we were thrilled to be one of the districts that it was awarded this. It is technically a pre-K through three grant, but the learning that happens through it will obviously be beneficial for us through eighth grade. So, before I take questions, I just want to take a moment, as I always do, to thank the, the teachers and the school leaders. All of these things I'm referring to, implementation and grant writing, this is all very hard work. Implementation is physically exhausting, it's emotionally exhausting, and they're just, I couldn't say enough, you know, congratulations to the teachers, whether or not it's Teacher Appreciation Week, for the work they've done, because they've really committed to these implementations, and it shows when you're walking around and seeing the students and hearing their, hearing their, the academic discourse. It's, it's so evident, and it's really exciting. So I wanted to say thank you to them and give them a shout-out before we open it up for questions.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the thorough presentation. It was very exciting. I do have a couple of questions, but I'm gonna once again go down the table, yeah, and we'll start down at the end.
I just have one quick question. I was wondering, when they do the modules, like, for example, with the middle school where they have the four books, are they trying to read all of the primary literature sources? Are there certain sections of each one that they just take excerpts, or are they like reading the book?
So it depends on the grade level, and it depends on the module. Are you referring more to middle school or to elementary school?
I was thinking more of middle school. I have the impression that elementary school has more pieces of, but, yeah.
Yeah, so middle school, many of the books they do read in entirety. There have been a couple of nonfiction books where they are focusing in specifically on certain parts of it. So that, yeah.
And even at the elementary, there are often, there is often, especially upper elementary, a core text that they read the whole text, and then there are additional texts that might be shorter or articles that go with it, or even pieces of art that are part of the complement.
So I actually have more of a comment. I, I really liked that visual of the rope. What did you call it again?
It's Scarborough's Reading Rope.
I've never seen that, which is really, it's cool to visualize, and I'm a teacher in another district. I'm sort of trying, I'm thinking about some of my students with specific learning disabilities in reading, and how powerful this image could be for some of our older learners to highlight their strengths. Like, okay, look at all of these things you can do, and these are the threads that we're gonna highlight. we're going to highlight and we're going to improve and we're going to, you know, build on that skill so that you can get to the end of this rope here. So I, I just thought it was really cool and I'm, I'm going to bring this back to some of my students in my classroom. So thank you.
Well, if you're lucky, Megan, I'll send you the writing rope to go with it. And you can have two ropes.
Thank you for the presentation. And I had a question on, on the K to five and also the middle school. You said that you went through modules one through three. How many modules are there at the K to five and the K to six to eight? And is it recommended that you get through more than one to three or what?
Yes, that's, that's, thank you for asking that. That question often comes up. So both curricula do have four modules. Whit and Wisdom does have a fourth module, EL does as well. In both cases, module four is, is sort of like a bonus module that repeats the standards that are taught in modules one through three. There are a couple of grade levels where we need to incorporate some of the, the module four standards earlier in, and we have developed plans to do that. But part of your question is, will we get to module four? And yes, we will. But what all of our consultants through the two different curricular resources have explained to us is that that usually doesn't happen until year three of implementation. Year two, some people are starting to hit module four. I actually was in communication with one teacher about starting module four, but it won't really be district-wide probably until year three of implementation.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know how many modules there were, and hearing that module four is just like supplement or review, it isn't that our students are losing anything.
Correct.
And, you know, yeah, it takes a while to get through it. The students, like you said, the students that had Whit and Wisdom last year, when they progressed to the next grade, they have the strategies and they're ready and in place. So it makes it easier. And the teachers can just reinforce instead of introducing some skills and strategies. On the, going on to what Kristen was asking about in the EL Education six to eight, on slide 11, were those four trade books or are those trade books and maybe some graphic novels or something?
Yes, so this, I just projected it again, this is the slide you're referring to, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yes, so the, what you see here are the core texts for each grade level. So by the grade six, you see the core texts, you see Lightning Thief, The Boy Who Harnesses the Wind, Two Roads and Hidden Figures. So those are all authentic sort of chapter books, trade books. And each one of those, so Lightning Thief was the module one core text. So Lightning Thief was not the only book they read during that module. They read other supplementary text sources. But there is one, but those are, they're real chapter books. There is one graphic novel in eighth grade, but other than that, they are, they're, they're not graphic novels, they're chapter books, either fiction or nonfiction.
So how are they differentiated for those students that are not reading at, let's say, a sixth grade level?
Yeah, I, we have actually, we have, make sure that we have access to listening or books on audio for all of our core texts. The teams have worked closely with the librarian, and I've been in touch with the librarian a lot this year at Malacan, Jill. And she's done a phenomenal job of figuring out how we use our resources to make sure we have audio for all the students who need it. And so far this year, I believe she's been able to procure audio for as many as our full grade level population for certain, for certain texts. And not all the students will, will need that audio, but it's, it's there as, as an accommodation if necessary. So part of the draw of both of these high-quality resources is that we want all students to engage in rigorous grade level content. So that is something that the curriculum is really, is really passionate about, is how do we engage all students in this? So we do have those, those options for them.
Yeah, I think the audio would help with the students even listening to the cadence of words in a, in a sentence and with expression. I know that the Organization for the Blind in Boston would always had audiobooks available. Okay. Last question I have, I'm very curious about this PRISM. So, and I applaud you and all the teachers and even Stephanie for applying for this grant. What is the amount that this grant is in? It doesn't come in every year, is, is it a five-year, they gave you $200,000? What is it?
This year, it was about, between Northborough and Southborough, it was about $28,000, somewhere in that ballpark. We actually this year won't spend all of it because they were very, the process has taken some time to get rolling. And there, there's a little bit of flying, of building the plane while we're flying it at the state level. So, and we were only allowed to use the money this year on stipends. Like there was one very specific use to form our leadership team, to do the literacy scan and to create the plan. So that was the amount for this year. In year two and beyond, there will be continuation grants and it will be based on the scan and the needs, and we don't yet know the amount. I, I will say that our, our experience thus far is that there is a tremendous amount of support and investment in this grant from the state. I've been really impressed with just the number of people that we are interacting with and working with. And so they did announce the total amount across the state for PRISM one, it was, and it was a really large sum of money, but we don't know the exact. What we do also know is that it is intended to be any money that is spent to support staffing, which, so if, for example, they were to suggest that there was some sort of staffing that we try to add as a, with the support of the grant, it would be a graduated financial model where it would be like 100% on the grant and then the next year 75% grant, 25% operational, 50 for 50, and then 25, 75. And it, it, the intent is to build a sustainable model and help districts be able to make staffing changes over time.
Okay. So you said that the first year, that this is just for stipends. So it's for work that teachers are doing, reading teachers are doing in Northborough and Southborough, and looking at the reading programs we have and the data from the students and how we can show improvement.
It is a leadership team, so it's representative teachers from both districts, from all different roles that are working after school and beyond the school day to help do all of the work you just said.
That's fabulous, because teachers always need that time to confer with each other and bring all their expertise together. And did I understand, Megan, that you said that a coach was funded through this grant? Is that a literacy coach or reading coach?
I should specify that, yes. So they're called PRISM coaches. So it's a coach that Desi has partnered us with. The coach is from an organization called TNTP that, Stephanie and I are big fans.
They're, they're really excellent.
They do a lot of research and they're, they're excellent consultants. So we've been paired with our PRISM coach who is guiding us through this work.
It's, I mean, you could think of it as a consultant that has been assigned to us.
Oh, okay.
And she's working with other districts as well. Like we know that the one we're working with is also working with Nishoba. She's visited along with one of her colleagues and done classroom visits. She meets with us bi-weekly and then she meets with our leadership team. So she's really kind of the consultant who is partnering with us to guide this work. She has tremendous expertise in literacy, but she also has expertise in sort of change management and kind of the overall process.
Okay. Because when you mentioned coach, I was thinking back to former days when it would be a literacy coach or a reading coach and it'd be a staff member that we would hire to do that or a teacher would take that. So it's more of a consultant that comes in. And what was that acronym that you used that you liked, the TNTP? Okay.
They're a national consulting group that, it used to stand for the New Teacher Project. I believe they're one of those organizations that then said, we no longer stand for the New Teacher Project, we are just TNTP.
Artist formerly known as?
Formerly known as, we are just TNTP. But they are, we are working with them in some other areas as well. Desi has partnered with them in a lot of different areas. They really have very knowledgeable, excellent reputation, do great work, have been a great resource for us, both with PRISM and in some other areas.
All right, thank you. Thanks for answering all my questions, because I thought PRISM was a program, but now I have a better understanding of consultants, educators, working together and what this grant is doing. Thank you very much. Good luck.
So last year, the fifth grade book, there was a historical fiction that was a little controversial, stirred up some feelings and stuff. How is the adjustment this year, have they been able to, with books after having like one year of, not just the fifth grade, but all the books? And how, has there been?
Yeah, yeah. And Stephanie, I don't know if you?
I can start if you want.
Yeah, if you want to start and then I can jump in.
So as we got to know the curriculum and that, that book that you're referring to is the first module of fifth grade.
Yep.
And it, you know, we were, everyone was sort of trying to keep up with learning the program.
Yep.
And I think people were a little caught off guard. And what we did this year is we actually started with module two.
Okay.
So that we had some time to work together with teachers and to work with school leaders to say, okay, this was challenging last year, what do we want to do differently? And we worked together, made decisions together, decided and, and got feedback from teachers about what worked well in that module. And, you know, how did they feel about moving forward with it? Made a collaborative decision that we were going to continue to use the book this year, but gave people very specific suggestions and ran a session that fifth grade teachers, I think it was optional, but that fifth grade teachers could come to and even to hear from some of their peers about, because some teachers felt very strongly that it was a really effective
Yeah.
module. And so we provided a set of supports and then we taught it later in the year. And I think it's been, seemed to go better.
Yes, it was quite smooth.
It was very smooth.
It seemed like there was a lot in middle school, at least for September. I don't know if you feel this way or not, Kristen, but it seemed like there was a lot more, like it seemed like my daughter was reading a lot more than this year. Doesn't seem like she's reading as much.
This year?
Yeah, this year. Are there, is it less, is it less books that they have to read or is it just set up different? Like, I don't know why, I feel like they had, did she have?
My daughter's been reading more. Actually, she was mad that she didn't think they were going to get to finish Patient Zero. That's the first book she's voluntarily reading on her own. She's jumped up and down throwing, like say she was, that's what she was reading after her afghan. Like, I'm going to read this because I don't know if we're going to touch it.
Yeah. Maybe it's just.
But that might be her.
Yeah.
She's been my fighter for reading.
Yeah. And Addie's very indep, she's a very independent student in her thing, so she doesn't, so maybe it's she's just not sharing with me as much that she's, what she's reading, maybe she doesn't like it as much, whatever. Because I just remember her, it seemed like she was reading a new book almost every week last year. Like it seemed like they had a lot of extra books to read.
I, I think they, I, I'm not sure about the specifics of that scenario, if she was, if those were self-selected books at the library or in the classroom libraries. Students still have the same access to choice books, you know, in the library and also many of the classrooms have choice book libraries as well. One thing that we've observed with middle school implementation and what we experienced last year is the pace of year one is slower of implementation, just because everything is new. And it, it just takes a little bit of time to kind of get the rhythm of it. So we're finding this year in K through five, students are moving further into the, the curriculum than we did in year one. And I imagine it will be similar for middle school. So that next year, if it, if they spend, you know, X amount of months on one module, it's going to be a shorter amount of time next year, which will by nature increase the amount of books that they are reading. But I, I don't know about the very specifics of, of that one student.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, as you said, I, I just remember like, because I remember her reading and thinking in the back of my head, my current sixth grader, I'm like, she's going to be sh- because she is not a reader, so, but she hasn't complained at all. So I'm kind of like, uh, what's going on here? Where, do they not have it? So I don't know. You know, as I said, I've got the advantage, disadvantage of having back-to-back kids. So it's like, you know, and they are in different colors, is that what they do in them? Like, so it could be like, they're different, you know, it was a different group of teachers teaching this one versus that one, so maybe they do things different. I don't know. But I just thought it was interesting that I just realized, and it didn't really dawn on me until this presentation. And then how's the faculty, how are the faculty appreciating the new curriculum? I know when you have something new, it's, sometimes it's hard to get buy-in and, you know, grumblings happen and stuff like that. How was, obviously, we're still in year one with Malacan, but how was it with K through five? Are they, seem to be a little?
Yeah, you know, well, you go first and then I can add.
Yeah, I, I think K through five, teachers have shared with me this year that they're feeling more confident with it and much more, because it's familiar now and they see that, they seize the end goal. You know, they've already gone to, to that end goal one time. So now they, the lessons just feel a little bit more, oh, I see where we're going with this. And I have a sense of where I can kind of speed things up or where I really need to slow things down. So that's the feedback that I've heard from K to five, is that generally, and they're, they're feeling more confident with it and able to really focus more on student, various student profiles and how to, how to modify for those profiles. Middle school is very, I think it's experiencing what K through five experienced last year, is just really trying to wrap their heads around each module, each unit within the module and then the lessons within those units. But, you know, teachers have been working so, so hard with implementation and I think they had so much to feel proud about because the student experience, you know, like I said earlier, the academic discourse that I hear and some of the writing pieces that are shared, it's just, there's so much to celebrate. But I'm sure you have something to add.
The only two quick things I'll add is, one is just that, like anything, there's, there's variability. For some teachers, we're hearing, this is what I've been waiting for. And for others, it's, it's like, wow, it's, it's hard to change and it's something new to learn. But the other thing I'll add is that it, in late May last year, we gave a survey to see how year one of implementation had gone in Whit and Wisdom. And we will be doing that again. And we will be doing it again with all of the areas where we have new implementation because if you may recall from the graphic, it's implement and monitor, right? And so we're always looking for that opportunity to hear teachers' voices on what they're experiencing and how it's going. So we'll be doing that again.
Thank you so much for all of your presentation and all, answering all of our questions. I appreciate it so much.
And I just, yeah, or you go ahead, because you're probably saying the same thing I was going to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge Megan's hard work and dedication. This is a multi-year journey and a significant undertaking with ELA curriculum resources. So she has been consistent, persistent, she has kept her, you know, the work centered on students and the goals that we're trying to move forward with. And she's been supportive and it's been impressive to watch her lead. And as, as she indicated, we're asking people to change and people, people are, and it's impacting kids. So I just want to thank Megan for her hard work, dedication and skill in, in leading this, this work.
Thank you, Greg.
You're good.
I'm so happy that.
Thank you, Megan.
You're welcome. And the Scarborough Reading Rope, I'm happy that you're taking that.
It's a great takeaway.
It is really, it is a great descriptor of the different skills and understanding.
Question before we move on to the next thing, can we turn the lights up a little bit?
Yeah, I'll grab it.
It just seems really dark, right? I, am I, I might, you know?
Okay.
It's been a long day. No, I didn't know if there was like a, I mean, I don't want neon lights either, but I didn't know if they have, I feel like.
Yonder did it.
Is that too bright? A little, a little softer? A little softer. I will be like, a little higher, a little.
You had your sun here before.
Oh, beautiful.
I think that's a good, no, no, go too far. Smidge up. Yep, yep. That's really, it's perfect. Oh, gotta go, time to go, lights off. I guess there's no happily be.
I guess there's no happily beaming.
That's not bad.
That's a little better. I just, I didn't know if it was like on a sensor, and it was going to be getting brighter, or, but I figured-
Energy conservation here in the district, I see.
I figure we're probably like, starting to blackout on the cameras at home, like, no sound, although I hear sound as well.
Lost our sun mic.
Well, that's the thing, is it got colder too. Bye, thank you so much. It felt like it got colder too, when the sun went away, I was like, ooh, glad I brought my little sweater, my winter sweater, pulled out there. Alrighty, we are moving on to the food service presentation.
Yeah, so I want to thank the committee for the opportunity to share kind of our travels over the last couple of months, in regards to the Food Services Management Company Request for Proposal process, and ultimately, recommendation. So, tonight, our, our agenda is fourfold, where I'm going to introduce to you the review team that did a lot of work to get us to this point, also share a little bit of background information, including a timeline of what's transpired over the last couple of months, and then we'll dig into the process itself. This is a procurement that's new to our district, it's something relatively new statewide, and we're going to talk about that when, in regards to our interactions with DESI, and then at the end, ultimately, where, where we landed after the, the complete process was done. So, first, I do want to thank the team. What we did hear from some of the firms that we engaged with is this was quite a comprehensive team, usually they see three to four people at the district level. We, we expanded it for a variety of reasons, because we wanted to make sure that a number of different perspectives were in the room, and I think that was extremely valuable, especially in the, the first time that we went through this type of process. So, Sunny Cox is the financial accountant for the district, who was extremely helpful in, in putting things together for us, Mary Ellen Duggan, who's here this evening, District Wellness Coordinator, certainly part of our food services program for a variety of different angles, myself, Brian Lawrence, who is the Melican Middle School Food Services Manager, his, his leadership has been important, and he was a great member of this team, Becky from the Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Lee Rondo is Brian's counterpart at Trotter, so the Trotter Food Services Manager, and then our new Food Services Manager at Algonquin, Gina Sayso, who just began with us in January of, of this past year due to Diane Coper's retirement. So, that rounds out the team, certainly giving experience, not only from the financial side, but just the day-to-day operations, what it means to be behind our, our kitchens and making it happen, so a well-rounded group to go through, and I really appreciate their time as we navigated this. So as far as the background information, it's always key, and this is included in your packet, you know, alphabet soup, a little bit with the acronyms, and sorry to oblige you with this, some of these are familiar to many on the committee, I would imagine, but ones that we're going to dive into today, guaranteed return is something that Becky is going to comment on a lot, we're going to talk about the Request for Proposal process, also referred as RFP, the ratings, which were critical, we are going to explain that in a little greater detail, so we have a good understanding of how we got where we, where we did with our recommendation, and to know that an SFA is us, the food, School Food Authority is what is assigned to us from a, a state level, so we can execute a, a national school lunch program, and certainly, that's overseen by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. So that's the alphabet soup, and if you need any clarification as we go, I'd be happy to provide that. So as far as a timeline, it, it was a pretty aggressive timeline, it had a lot of work at, at different phases, but it did start in late February with the publication of an RFP out to the public, so firms could consider whether or not they wanted to work with us in our district. We did host a mandatory pre-bid meeting on March 4th, and I'll go into a little more detail about that, but they did get the opportunity to tour many of our schools. On the 14th, many of the interested firms had questions, and we provided a response to that, I think we did over 65 total questions, which is a very large number, but because of the uniqueness of our district, and certainly the first time that we embarked on this type of procurement, it was important to get all those questions answered well, which I believe that we did, which ultimately helped in the end. After that, the firms had around, you know, nine to 10 days to respond to that, and then find, submit their proposal to the district on March 24th. And then from there is really when the committee took over, and the selection process began, which is leading to tonight's recommendation. Highlights of this were certainly our site visits of Neshoba and Marlboro, we want to thank those districts for welcoming us, we were able to tour multiple schools in each of those districts to really learn about their operation, kind of behind-the-scenes type stuff, and interact with their staff, which was, which was critical, and ultimately landing to where we did. And we conducted an interview, so we gave the opportunity for firms to present to us, and we were, had the opportunity to ask them standardized questions, which helped us with our ultimate evaluation. And then when we got down to, right around April break, and then beyond, we did get down to the point of, of the selection process, which we're going to detail a little further. And then what's happening from this point on, tonight is the first of three presentations, we're making one to Northborough School Committee tonight, next Wednesday will be Southborough and the region to follow, and it'll be very similar, although, three different contracts, which we'll talk about a little bit, which makes things a little bit complicated for us.
Keith, can I just stop you for one second?
Sure, can.
So the site visits-
Mm-hmm.
With Witson at Neshoba, and Aramark at Marlboro, is it, do they use those?
They do.
Okay, so that's why it was, okay.
Correct, those are clients' accounts, right, of those, of those firms, and we went to see them in action. Yep.
And you got to talk to the districts too?
We did.
Okay.
We did.
And if I can just point out, SFE, their closest district to us was in New Jersey, so that is why we did not conduct an onsite visit with them.
Okay.
However, they did provide us with some videos that we could use to kind of gauge their program.
Okay.
So, a little bit more about the process, and I think this is, is very critical to understand, and, and show the depth of work that, that had to be conducted in order to get to tonight's recommendation. Just as far as kind of some global things, six firms were interested in becoming a Food Services Management Company for the district that attended our, our pre-bid, some of them came from quite a distance, I think Virginia was one of the companies that came up, and then SFE was another. Ultimately, four companies submitted proposals at the March 25th deadline, and from that, three of them were viable, meaning they met all of the procurement criteria, and the procedural criteria, and could be reviewed. The fourth unfortunately did not follow the procurement procedures, and had to be rejected. I believe that was probably more true, because they hadn't done business in Massachusetts before, and weren't familiar with the process, because it is highly prescribed, and a lot of steps had to be taken. So, we did get to that point of having three vendors that were viable for further review.
What was, can I ask what was, so, with the-
I mean, I, you could, I can ask, but you don't have to answer. I mean, I was just curious.
So part of the, when you're doing a Request for Proposal, that's different than the bid that we did for the transportation company, where they submit a bid, and you open the bid, and you see the numbers. With this, they're presenting you first with, like, their overview of their company, like, they're answering key questions that we put in the RFP, we get to know about their operations, about the menus and things like that. Once we determine the company that's highly advantageous, or companies, that's when you open the price proposal. So they're supposed to submit two separate envelopes, and the price proposal has to be clearly marked and sealed. Unfortunately, this company did not do that, it was mixed in with their regular. So when we opened the non-price proposal, the price proposal was in the same box, and it was not labeled at all, so we had to disqualify them based on that.
What was the pricing?
I did not look.
We weren't allowed to look.
It was kind of a, oh no, this is in here, so moved it to the side, consulted with our attorney, and she agreed that we needed to reject the bid.
An example of why you need to follow directions.
Follow directions? I mean, I, I just taught that to my preschoolers last week, though. At first, do you want me to help you and explain this?
We'll bring the RFP with us, it'll be, it'll be a treat for all, let me tell you.
Pre-bid attorney.
Yeah, that's right.
Right before naptime.
Yeah.
So actually, Becky, that's perfect, and it dovetails nicely with the detail that you, you see here. So when we're really getting into those non-price proposals, we had to pre-select evaluation criteria that we were using, these were the main highlighted items here on the list, the first batch are DESI prescribed, so this is part of that template that I've discussed, but with that template, you have the opportunity to modify. So through our work and collaborating with other districts, prior to releasing this to the public, we added two more evaluation criteria. That was our impressions of the interview and presentation that they did, coupled with the site visit, and this was something that was recommended to us, and that we included, and it became part of the overall rubric that our team used to, to evaluate. And this is when we kind of get into the rating scale. So with each of these came certain levels of criteria, and we can really bore down into the details, some of them are more objective than others, like general experience in this area, working in the area, food service management, X number of years. So that was something that was pretty clear, that could either get them a, a rating of highly advantageous, all the way down to unacceptable. Some of the others were more subjective, like their proposed menus, and certainly the ones that we added, their presentation and site visit, which is really where we were able to borrow down and understand how these companies would match our needs, and would be good partners with us. So it was genuinely an interview to get down into the nitty-gritty, to make sure that their, you know, plans and how they operate would complement us well. So one of the things that came up in a lot of conversations is what the goal of this ultimately was, this is not to find something to come in and replace, there is a lot of good work that happens in our kitchens, all over the district. This is genuinely an opportunity to add resources and complements of improved leadership, to really get and improve our program and the student experience. So what these are really geared towards is making sure that those things will occur. So the ultimate goal of this is not to, not to replace, it is absolutely to complement what, what, what we're already doing, and finding, building that continuity, because now we'll have the lens of, of a company to look at it from K to 12, not just a specific kitchen, or a specific district, because we are unique, because we are three separate districts that work under one umbrella. So, like we said before, this would be something that we would engage as an entire district, and not, bless you, and not necessarily by each individual district, and we can get into that a little, little later down the road. Before I go on, are there any questions about the evaluation criteria? Because honestly, this is probably the more important part of, of the work that we did to analyze the non-price proposals that came in.
We're not coming back.
We may, you can. And now Kristen Naismith? Yes, Kristen Naismith.
I'm just wondering what things like student participation, like, does that mean, how many students are taking the, how many are actually eating lunch?
Yes.
Okay. See, when I see student participation, I think like, I think-
They're cooking. Sharon Welkum is about 20 students a day to help out, you know, unkind joking. No, it does mean students, the number of students selecting school lunch as their, as their choice throughout the day, and how those are kept. I mean, we keep very close records now, and the goal would be to improve that, and to increase that, because there is room for that, even with free meals, bringing up our total participation, there is room for improvement, especially in breakfast, which was identified pretty clearly by many of the firms that, that looked at our, our schools. Any other questions about the criteria? All right, moving on. Pellegrino.
Well, we've already touched on the procurement process itself, so really, when we're looking at the rule of award for this contract, there were really three steps that are involved, and this first is looking at that non-price proposal, what's going to, on the site visits, conducting the interview, and the committee was given a, an evaluation tool that they could complete, so that they were evaluating each of those criteria that Keith had spoken about. Once we had completed that process, we then were able to filter out those who are only rated as highly advantageous, and those firms would be the only ones that we would be opening the price proposal for. If they were not rated as highly advantageous, then we did not open any of the price proposals for, for those firms. I will say that, let's say there was a scenario where nobody was rated highly advantageous, then the district could make the decision to move forward with a distant advantageous vendor, but that was not the case for us. Then finally, we do open those price proposals, at that point, we are looking at the highest guaranteed return in comparison to all of the firms that are rated as highly advantageous. And then if step one and step two, we have a tie, then we are looking at the management fees that the district, or rather, the food service company would be evaluating or giving the, the district. Sorry, can't get the words up tonight.
We're close.
Can you just expand on the highest guaranteed return? I think that was a, what's this return, it's like a return on investment, like?
I do have that.
Do you want to go down to that?
Okay, perfect, I just want, because I know that that was-
Yes, I do have more information about that.
Okay, perfect.
We should hold it go there.
No, but, but we can just move to that.
Okay, we'll definitely go back to that and expand upon it, Kelly. So we're looking at the recommendation itself, this is the summary of the results that we had for the three firms that we referred their non-price proposals. The three that were reviewed are the Food Services Management Companies, Aramark, SFE, which is also known as Southwest Food Services Excellence, and Witson's Culinary Group. And out of that, and after the non-price proposal review, it was determined that Aramark was advantageous, SFE was advantageous, and Witson was our only highly advantageous proposal that came in. So they are the ones that moved to step two.
So you only opened their, so you don't know what the other?
Correct. So this is a nice little flow chart of kind of how we went, and what are the different things that had to occur over the time. So as, as Becky mentioned, certainly the guaranteed return, the administrative fee and management fee, were all part, a part of the price proposal that was opened, and Witson's is ultimately the, the company that was reviewed as part of this process. So this is a nice little slide chart of where we began, with four that ultimately, four companies that ultimately submitted proposals, three were reviewed, and one became selected as highly advantageous. So then we need to do a deeper review. Becky?
So, at this point, I do want to acknowledge Sunny Cox, she is our financial accountant for the district, and she was on the committee, and she was really instrumental in reviewing Witson's price proposal, and she also did an excellent job of preparing an evaluation after analyzing the financials that were submitted by each of the companies, and gave the committee kind of a review, a key sheet, if you will, of those financials in layperson's terms, so that they could understand the status of each of the companies. So, just really want to thank her, she has done a lot on this. So, as part of the price proposal, each vendor was required to provide a Schedule E, which was a financial schedule to the district. On that Schedule E, it contained their projected revenues, as well as their expenses for the upcoming school year. It also included their proposal for a management fee and an administrative fee. So they developed those projections based on the financial data that we shared with them as part of the RFP document. And the shared data includes their profit and loss statements for FY '24, salary data, our state and federal reimbursements, as well as our meal count, so that they had a good picture of what our district had been doing in the previous year. We then reviewed three figures as part of that proposal, and that would be the guaranteed return, that we are going to talk about, the management fee, and the administrative fee. So the guaranteed return that Witson's has proposed for our district is $5,477. This means that the lowest profit amount that Northborough will receive as part of this contract is $5,477. It will, it can exceed that amount, but it will never go lower than that amount. So if for some reason, next year, the, our food service program runs a loss, we will not have that loss, we will still be guaranteed the $5,477. So that's something important for the committee to understand. Also included in that guaranteed return are a number of assumptions about some of the costs that they, oh, I just want to go back for one second. That they incur. We have two fee structures, and those are the management fee, and then the administrative fee. In this proposal, they can be proposed as either a flat fee, or it can be determined based on the projected student annualized meals multiplied by a fixed amount. Witson's did choose to do it as a fee structure based on the number of annual student meals, it is not a flat fee. So in this instance, they would be charging us, for their management fee, it would be 11 cents, or it's actually .116. For their management fee, it would be 11 cents, or it's actually .116 cents, times their projection for our annualized student meal count, which they have projected at 233,470, which is not far off from where we were in fiscal year '24. The administrative fee is five cents, again, per projection of 233,470 meals. So you can see they're projecting their fee structure for the management fee as being 27,000, and then the administrative fee at 11,000. So really, I think by having a model that is not a flat fee, is based on the number of participants, is an incentive for the vendor also to increase that student participation as we go through the year. So just to get back to the guaranteed return, as I said, that's the lowest amount that Northborough will receive at the end of the year. It also takes into account the management and administrative fee, as well as any estimated costs.
Ready?
So we can move on to the estimated costs. So if the actual costs exceed the estimated cost and/or participation is not high as projected, then Witsen's will absorb any additional costs as part of their agreement with the district. We will continue to receive all of the federal and the state reimbursements that we receive right now. And what will happen is Witsen's will then be invoicing us on a monthly basis for any of the expenses that they incur, like the purchase of the food, the purchase of any supplies and things like that. The expenses that are included in this proposal, these are some of the larger items, are first of all, a food service director, and that director will be shared across the three districts. It also includes.
Just for our schools.
Just for our schools, yes.
They don't work anywhere else.
They do not.
And that's the, so the reason you have a different presentation is that each group of us will have this share.
Yes, yep. Also cafeteria and office supplies. So Witsen's has not identified anything specific to be purchased, but just for an example, the supplies that they're talking about are kind of cleaning supplies. They're the kitchen utilities, or not utensils, not utilities and tools, you know, things that are used on a daily basis, as well as the office supplies that are needed to run the operations. The equipment repairs and maintenance, again, these are projections on their part. There's nothing that's been identified. I can share with you that in FY '24, we did have a capital expenditure of $21,000, and that was to replace our milk coolers in each of the schools. And that was due to a new contract that we had with a new milk supplier. So they are looking at some of our past historical financial data, and so coming up with some assumptions.
So what if it's more than that?
If it's more than that, then it's similar to our budget, where we're coming up with projections, and then if something is over budget, we have to either look elsewhere within our budget to make adjustments. But again, if they go over their budget, we are not at risk of that because of that guaranteed return.
So that estimated cost, is that set now that for cafeteria and office supplies, it's 21,000? And if they spend anything over that, then they have to pay for it?
That's just of the P and L, of the profit and loss of the, sorry, of the circuit that is the lunch program. That's just how much they're estimating it's going to cost them to contribute to that, the expenses portion as an offset of the revenue from the lunch sales.
Yeah, okay.
So it's really non-budgetary, I guess is what I'm trying to drill down to, which is all of us obviously are flagged for budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
No, thank you, Bryce. That was a great explanation. The other thing that, just to keep in mind, is that the transportation, right now, we contract with a third party to provide transportation for the food that's going between our schools. We have some cooking schools, some non-cooking schools. This will provide that transportation. And we also suspect that it's probably going to be helpful in terms of the purchasing for all three districts, because they may be able to have food delivered to one site, and we would have that dedicated transportation to then move it to the site. So we're assuming that there's going to be some efficiencies gained for this method. And then also with the insurance. So as part of their contract, they are required to maintain liability coverage, and that would be general liability coverage, auto, workers' comp, and employee liability coverage. So that's what that insurance estimate is. In speaking with our attorney, having a third party, if there was some sort of issue that arose that our insurance, an insurance company has to get involved, it would be their responsibility. It would not fall to the district. And that is why we make sure that they have this insurance coverage, so that they would be the responsible party.
Does it save our policy at all? Like, are we seeing a reduction in our policy because of that?
We are covered through the town, so it would not change our policy. And then lastly, it also gives us access to a dietitian, and that is something that we currently do not have. This person will be assisting with menu development and analysis, and they'll also ensure compliance with the USDA standards. They are available to come onsite, and they can also assist with professional development on nutrition education, as well as allergy protocols. So again, as I said, these are estimates. I think that this is going to be the first year, really, of working through this. Witsen's does have some experience in working with a district similar to ours, where it is three separate entities, but one umbrella over that. And so I think it's going to be really getting to know one another in that first year in terms of the operational costs, and they'll definitely have a better sense of our district, you know, as we go throughout the year.
One other piece I'll just note, because it's probably important, because we just touched on it a little bit, is that our current staff, from managers to our cafeterias, will remain district employees. That was part of the distribution of materials that we gave to these companies. These are costs that are assumed. So the collective bargaining agreements in place for our Northborough Unit C will remain, and those figures were included in the ultimate proposal. So one of the questions that has come up routinely is, will we remain district employees? And the answer is yes.
And we're not losing any district.
And we are not. We did have an unexpected resignation of our food services manager. That's not a position that we're currently going to fill, but we are going to have a conversation, if this all comes to fruition, about how to manage that work or what type of realignment we need to make. But that is something that we're putting on hold for now until we investigate further.
Can I just bring up one more thing?
Sure, of course.
Sorry about that. So just want to point out as well that these costs will be revisited annually. This is a one-year contract. We do have options for four additional years after that, but each year, we would need to really negotiate that. So we would also need to negotiate the fees as well. And so this is something that's not set in stone, but as we work through the year, as I said, they are going to have a better sense of where these costs are.
And I have a question on the equipment repairs and maintenance. Is that on the current equipment that we have? So if something goes wrong with, you mentioned, you know, the milk machine or something like that, they will take care of the maintenance? I mean, the repairs on that?
Yeah. They also take care of paying all of the invoices, all the procurement of the food. The, really, the thing that we would retain, and that is because we are, you know, retaining our employees, would be the payroll, but everything is really going to be handled by the food services management company.
So what happens if we have to get a whole new machine of some sort? Who pays for that?
Capital.
Yes, that would be.
We do.
We do, out of the capital.
Yep.
Okay.
And that was an option to retain that as part of, so we could keep control of that? Because that's something we have a good handle on, because we have been self-operating for so long. We know the condition of our equipment, we know where it is in its cycle, we know the things, when they need to replace, we have that pretty well cataloged. So that's why, one reason why we made the decision to retain that responsibility.
So we have that option.
We do. But we do have an allowance of, you know, of $15,000 to do what we are anticipating will be more operational maintenance things versus larger capital items.
So when they came in and did an onsite visit, did they come in, first of all, did they do an onsite visit to look at all the equipment we have?
A cursory look, you know, I mean, these are pretty experienced people. We had people at part of their regional offices that came through. They were taking a look, but they weren't going under the hood, so to say.
They weren't looking to see.
No.
When we purchased.
No, they did not go that deep. They did, had a general sense of when they go into this kitchen, as an example. Everything is pretty new. When you go into some of our other kitchens, you can see that some things are experienced.
Okay, and they did not go to every school.
And they did not go to every school.
Nice term, experienced.
You like that?
I like that.
Because it's not going to break tonight, Joe.
Okay. Thank you.
Good, yeah, and that, I think that helps with a bunch of the questions that we had out. So one thing that did pop up is just the type of support we're going to get. This is a little bit of a flow chart to understand kind of how things break down for the Witsen's team, where we can, we were going to have access to all those top bubbles, you know, especially during the transition process. The people that will be more directly working with us is where you see the gray boxes to the left kind of connecting. So general managers is certainly something that would be more regionalized, that would help us. A registered dietitian, maybe a staff member of theirs that will be shared with multiple districts, not someone who's going to be a full-time employee of ours, which is not something we need, but we're going to have access to that person. And then when it burrows down to the onsite team, that is where our director, you know, will come into play here, and that would be a Witsen's employee. However, the director will be someone that we hire in collaboration with them. So we will make sure we interview, we'll make sure that our goals are aligned and that is a good match for our team. And that's something that our current food services managers will participate in the process of selecting. So these are all additional people that will be supporting our operation. So as far as the transition process, part of the RFP included a pretty comprehensive transition process, everything from coming in and meeting with the staff to planning some professional development, things like that. But this kind of lays out what it's going to look like. First of all, working with each of the school committees with the presentation we're doing this evening, contract finalization, which is with Desi and Witsen's. And Desi's involvement is not as far as approval and oversight, but is to make sure that we actually followed the procurement procedures properly. And so far, we've gotten a thumbs up every step of the way, but we do have one more step to do with them to ensure that our contract is aligned. Then we have the selection of the district management team and school-based staff, which is the director, which I just spoke of. And then we start digging down into development, working with our kitchens, really doing an evaluation of what we're doing now and what type of resources are going to be needed from Witsen's to make it a success. So like I mentioned earlier in the presentation, this is really about the company dovetailing with what we're already doing well and complementing that and not taking it over. So they're going to have a lot to learn in the next six weeks to eight weeks about how we operate and making sure that it's aligned with our goals. And ultimately, once we do the rollover, their first, you know, day on the job, so to say, will be the first day of school, and the publication of those menus will be done through typical means like we do now. And in fact, I would expect that it would be enhanced with other marketing materials to support the work for the first one. Bryce?
Just want to make sure their first day of work won't be the first day of school.
Yes, exactly. So I do anticipate.
That's what you had said, so I'm just saying, what you meant was maybe July 1?
Yes, it is July 1 officially, but from our impression, they're going to want to get to know us earlier, as early as possible. So that's work that's going to begin. But July 1 officially, Bryce, correct. Their first, their first day of actually implementing our services, though, would be the first day of school. So. Do you want to do the honors? Yeah, Kelly.
You mentioned menus, and it just made me think, so that new app that we use, or would it be that?
It could be something, it could be something similar, it could be the same. That's one of the things that we're going to be talking about.
Something better?
Um, well, well, maybe I'll put it this way, Kelly. Kelly, one thing I could share.
Are you serious?
Yes, I'm serious.
Oh.
Well, one thing I could share is that it would, it will be more complete, and it will make sure that it has full and complete and accurate information. That's going to be one.
And maybe like usability, like you could print it from your phone?
I don't know.
Yes, Greg, some people print from phone.
I'll make, I'll work with them on trying to get that.
I was crazy to think that I would want to print something from my.
Printing is so 20s.
Do you want a hard copy?
No, I want to print a hard copy from her phone, not my computer.
From the refrigerator.
Not only like Safari, but I have to go to Chrome, like I have to go to specific things to get this printout.
It is a little wonky, yes.
Could we get a sample of, once they do that?
I thought we were supposed to have food samples tonight.
Food samples. I meant a sample of the menu, so I know what the people in the know are talking about.
Sure.
Okay. I'm so used to getting them.
I know this isn't the question and answer period, but I'm.
No, it's fine.
Go ahead.
Is it a question? I thought it was.
No, no, no.
It totally is.
We're all in the place. Two things. Could you maybe give a few sentence summary from two, I think it was two months ago when we were talking about this initially, you know, besides some of the financial benefits and things that you were discussing tonight? What are some of the other benefits of going this direction for our food service team?
Yeah, no, absolutely. So one of the things that I really feel, and this is what's basing on our recommendation, is, you know, there is, there is a lot of good things happening in our kitchens. There are. There's a lot of customization, there's a lot of individualization for kids and families. The menu offerings are not necessarily represented on what Kelly struggles to print, but there is a lot of options available to our kids that we don't do a good enough job of marketing to the community. So that, I can say, is something that came out of our food services study group last year as a main goal. That is one thing I think is going to be right at the top of the list. The second thing I would say, based on what I've learned more from the districts that have done this recently, is the continuity of the student experience. So what happens in one school is happening in another, and the offerings are aligned. Not to the point of being so regimented that there's no flexibility, but to the point that the quality, the presentation, and the overall experience with kids will be aligned, because this will be the first time that we've had a director aligned with all 10 schools. So once we see that continuity, that leadership can really develop what ultimately would be a main goal. The other thing that I think the company's going to provide is a tremendous amount of experience in this area, so maybe there's things that we've had blinders on. There's areas of efficiency to make our team more successful. That's the one I'm really honestly most looking forward to, getting a fresh set of eyes to come in and look at our operation to make the overall experience for our employees and ultimately our kids a better one. And I'm confident that this type of support and this infusion of support would do that versus other types of methods of improvement. So those are the things I'm confident of. It is a one-year contract, which I think is also an interesting, all this work for a one-year contract, but there's a reason why. If we're not happy with how things are going, we're not married to it for a five-year period. We can adjust. I think that's going to be key. I think that's also key for our staff. We're going to really get their feedback in the infancy of this to make sure it is delivering on some of those things, and that'll be part of the engagement process that I participate with in. So I'm feeling optimistic about this, I am. And it's something that I feel like we owe our team and the district a try as we embark in. It's a genuine investment to make things better. So I highlighted three of those, but I probably could go on.
Can I just, can I add that the goal is to really make sure that the product that we're providing to our students is high-quality, nutritious, and represents, you know, the diverse menu options that we can offer. We have, we have a great kitchen staff, as Keith had mentioned, and really looking at the ingredients they can use and really trying to improve the ingredients they have to provide meals to our kids.
Can I speak to the resignation you mentioned earlier? And I see that there's another resignation, you know, food service manager position at the elementary school. Are those related to this essential RFP?
Not necessarily.
Okay. I heard comments a couple months ago. I heard comments a couple of months ago from some people working in the food service team, and so I just, I want to make sure that those conversations and relationships continue to move forward in a positive manner.
And that's going to be, I think, one of the real goals of the infancy of the transition is to make sure that those conversations are happening in a positive way. I think anytime you embark on any type of change, as significant as this, there is some trepidation about that. I know that exists. You know, and a couple of things we're trying to answer, but the proof is in how things actually go, not what we say we're going to do, but what we actually do to make that happen. And I think that's going to be incumbent upon the director, you know, that comes on board. They need to really engage with our kitchen staff and know what the, you know, strengths and where the areas of growth are needed and really build a plan to get that improvement that we're hoping for. So, yes, I know there are people that are anxious about this, and it's completely and 100% understandable, but I'll go back to the original goal of this, is really to take what we do now, not to take over, but to take what we do now and build upon it and to improve it, and ultimately make things better for the kids. And I think as long as people embrace that and give it an opportunity, we got an opportunity for success here.
Lauren, I would say that the, some of the resignations were choices people made, that maybe they stopped the direction, it wasn't right for them, but it was not as a result of the district letting people go.
Yeah, that's a good point. Clarification.
A question on that. You have an onsite team that is here, the cafeteria staff, okay? Who they reported to this year, are they reporting to that same person next year, or are they reporting to Winston, Winston's team?
So, the way that it's set up, set up now is that Algonquin, we have a food services manager, Gina, who is new, and that will be, remain intact, so our staff will be reporting to that person. One thing we've got to evaluate is that we had a K-8 food services manager that now is a vacancy. What I'm anticipating is we're going to have to have a conversation about that, how best to utilize that, that resource. So, there very well could be a, maybe a different alignment of how we do it, but our goal would have someone at the district level where people could, you know, report to.
Okay, thank you.
But it might not be the same as what we've done before, if that makes sense.
No, it does, because when you have positions to fill, you may see a new avenue-
Correct, a new opportunity might-
New opportunity.
Correct.
Okay.
And just in general, we've had a high volatility in our food services staff, you know, people who have started and, you know, work a month and then leave. So, if you look at across our three districts, it's been kind of a volatile segment of our employees. We have some great people who are, have been with us and are committed, but a lot of turnover over the past year.
Do they help staffing?
They will. They help with the recruiting.
For the holes that we do have, they will help.
That's correct.
Bryce, do you have questions? I have a couple, but-
All right.
Okay.
So, we talked about guaranteed return. What was our return? I know we've had, prior to COVID, we had negative returns. After COVID, with state refunds, we started to see some positives. We were able to do some things. What was our positive, since it's been positive? What has it been, and then what are we going to?
So, I do have, I have FY '24's figures here. So, for last year, our profit was $108,497.
108, and next year it would be 5,000.
Well, that's our guarantee. It could be higher than that, though. That's just, that's the floor. So, if they, if the profit is 108, then we would be receiving that. We would be paying them the, their management fee, which is going to cut into that, but we would be receiving that money still.
Through the, through chair?
Yes, please.
The fee structure is what pulls down from the net profit.
Okay.
The expenses are included that work up to whatever profit is generated based on the sales. But the management fee, the fee structure is then a reduction from that outside. It's completely outside. It's the dollars they're guaranteed to get, right?
So, if it was 108 this year?
If it was 108 this year?
Subtract the management fee, and then that would be your, your net.
The, the management fee of-
27 and 11. Yeah, it was 27, 27 and 11, 27 and, yeah. So, $38,000, $40,000, you'd have a net of 68. And of the 68, what does that make up of your three months operating?
Our three months operating is, I think it's about $60,000.
Five, yeah, I was going to say, six, five, yeah. Right.
Great. You can only keep.
Yeah, because you can't, you can't keep it because of the new things, yeah. Use it or lose it.
And one of the things that's important to understand, and Bryce, I think you said it very well, is this is, this must be a self-sustained program. You know, we, and we've been fortunate to, the free meals has made the difference, as you commented, Kelly. It was in the red, it's now in the black. That is solely because of student participation in the free meals.
I do like that it is the one-year option, well, the one-year contract with the four additional. Is that like, it would be the same prices for those four years, or is it renegotiating?
Four years.
Okay, so regardless, so then what's, so then what are you renewing for the four years?
A different new contract, a different new management contract. Essentially, like the, the framework stays the same, the guts of what they say they would like out of it, and then what we're willing to ask from it can change year over year. So, if they wanted to say, look, that guaranteed return needs to go up, because we have some anxiety about this program slipping, and we need to protect this, from the school side, they could come and say, like, those are something that goes up. From the, from the food service contract management side, that they're going to see what their expenses are, wide.
And raise, they're potentially raising their management fees and their fee structure.
Correct.
Question. Talking about the free meals.
Mm-hmm.
Do the teachers, faculty, staff, do they get to?
They do not.
They do not. What do they pay for a meal?
425.
Yeah. And how many, how many do they?
Very few.
Very, yeah, very few.
Very, very few take advantage of that.
Did you want to eat this food?
So, in FY-
And do you think more people would?
Well, I'm dying to know what are FY '24?
So, FY '24, we had $113 in adult sales.
$113.
FY '24, K through 8, you had $124.
Wait, wait. That's how many people bought lunch?
So, but I would say that's, that was just in Northborough.
For the whole year?
If you look at the region.
Yeah, the region.
The regions are.
The region picks up, I bet. The high school picks up.
Yeah, the high school, because they've got more varieties, more options, more different, like-
Adult meals, $4.70.
70 cents, yeah.
$4.70.
Wow.
Plus tax.
Do, so did you try the food? Did you?
We did.
How does it, and I think there was some confusion last time when I was speaking, and there was some food services people here, and I was saying about the food tasting. I wasn't being insulting to them or what they're doing. They're doing, they have the resources and things they have. Like, I wasn't trying to do that. How does it compare, do you think, to what we're experiencing and, and the issues that we've seen and heard? Like, do you think-
I was impressed with what I saw, and I don't believe it was just a show either for us to be onsite. We do have relationships with those districts, and we did get, you know, ultimately, the references that we did were also very important to this evaluation. And they said there was an immediate improvement to the quality of food, the diversity of the menu items, and just the ability to make things very appetizing, though nutritious and covering all the bases. We're still going to be utilizing government commodities. We're crazy not to. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that are going to be out there, but just the ability to take that recipe and to turn it up a notch or add that variety is what they're seeing, and it's, overall, it's increasing student participation in their schools. So, now the numbers, it's not just the visual of it, it's also, it's backed up with, with students participating at a higher rates. So.
Thanks for answering all the questions.
You're welcome.
I see Kristen, she's like on the edge.
I kind of wanted to confirm that what I'm thinking is-
Okay.
Right, because when you said like 108,000, right, last year, they made, and let's assume, so then just 40 from there, we're going to estimate at 70. Are there things not listed on their, you know, their listed costs, estimated costs, but there are things that we use that for that we might not, like, say that falls and we only get five, are there district employees who play out, pay out that pool that we're going to have to save from somewhere else, or are there costs that are not covered by the company and their purposes that might come out? What do we use that money for now, I guess is part of my question?
What do we use that?
What does the excess of the, what does the, what do you do with the excess?
Capital.
Capital.
Okay, so potentially-
You could continue to add capital, cash.
Or not be able to.
I think that-
If it does fall to level-
Then it would fall in the war.
5,000, who we, then we're not buying a new fridge one year.
I think the operational budget in Northborough was subsidizing the food services department for many years. This removes that risk. And I think that also, as we look at the state budgets, I think the universal free meals is something we'll need to watch closely in future years to see if they, that the state can sustain it.
Tell me if I need to go to Capitol Hill on that one.
Yeah, that one-
I'm not as nice as Kelly. My kids don't get them anymore, okay? They even the school provides, or they make their own lunch. And I think each of them, each of my school-aged kids has made their lunch maybe two times and been like, oh, no, this is too hard, never mind. So, yeah, my, that's my concern, I guess, is just that if, and again, to Kelly's point, I like that it's one year, so we can use it to how it goes. And if we end up in a situation where it's, we wanted to use this to offset healthcare increases, but we can't because it wasn't high enough, it's not a commitment, as you said, we're not stopped for five days. So, I do like that. But then, I guess that's what I'm trying to think of, is that a-
Here's another way to look at it, is that with our current, our existing leadership, the profit was $108,000.
Yeah.
With a different leadership structure, with more efficiencies, and just a greater resource of the environment, there might be an opportunity to have $150,000. So, our net could be 108, even after-
Let's get those parents, let's get those teachers eating.
I think it's a year of learning.
Ah, teachers.
It'll be a year of learning.
475.
Let's break $200.
Place on the planet that exists, right?
But, you know, I know, we're, that's, that's a real thing, right? You know, I think-
We went through it, we went through it and conquered. We went, you know, we, we saw, you know, what it meant to get parents and to get teachers involved on site.
And I kind of also equate that to the marketing piece that we don't do well. If we were to provide a menu for adults and share it as something that was accessible so they didn't have to make a lunch in the morning, and they would benefit and enjoy that experience, just like we hope our students are enjoying the experience is better. That's something, that is an opportunity, just like the marketing is. These are oper, so, the other way, Kristen, kind of also to, this is also an investment and a very part, important part of the student's day, right? I feel it's time to do that. I love what happens in our kitchens. I wish I was in the kitchens more to see it, but I also, you know, see the good, bad, and the ugly with that, right? So, this is a real opportunity to build that continuity and to improve the experience for kids, and the hope is that it's the start of this improvement that we've been hoping for, hoping to get.
I think, I've said it before, I'm going to say it again, I think part of, some of the reason why some kids don't get lunch, besides the menu choices, is the process it takes to get the lunch. My daughter, there's menus, I was like, Addie, look, they've got mozzarella sticks, you would love mozzarella. She's like, I am not going in that line. I am not doing that. It's the process. It's intimidating, the line, it takes a long time, it loses time for them sitting down, eating with their friends. I don't know if this company or anybody has extra insight on how somehow-
Oh, sure, I mean, there's going to be-
But I would love to somehow do it, because that is losing, that is losing lunch.
22, 25 minutes?
They're lucky if they have 25 minutes. I don't even think it's that much.
They're going to get down there.
You know, it's like, you know.
So, I guess the next step is for the committee to take action.
Yep. So, we have, and that's the next agenda item, if there's no more discussion. That was the presentation.
We can talk about food hall tomorrow.
I know.
So, are you looking for a motion to approve?
So, we need, yeah.
A motion, I move to approve the response by Whitson's Food Services Management Company for a one-year contract that allows for four additional contract extensions based upon the district's satisfaction with the ongoing operations.
Second.
Sounds good to you guys? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? See, none? Kristen? Oh, wait, huh! Look at that, we're all present and encountered, we need to do a show of hands.
Joan, are you there? Joan?
We haven't done this in so long. Oh, my goodness. Show of hands, all in favor? It passes unanimously.
Appreciate the support.
Thank you so much. I'm excited to see what happens.
I see the next agenda item.
I'm going to-
Do we really need to dive into number six?
I'm going to, I'm going to be really quick on this one. All of our warrant articles and our budget passed. Thank you, yes, thank you. The team, it all passed, everything passed, and we are very fortunate.
I just want to thank the community of Northborough. I mean, I think we've had a longstanding support from the community around education, and, you know, we appreciate it, although it was a long three days.
Four.
We went three. You know, we greatly appreciate the community's support and of education and the warrant articles, so, so thank you. And thank you for the school committee for a challenging, you know, budget cycle, and thank you to Becky and the finance team for, for the work they do every day.
It was, it was, as we know, it was a long thing. I did bring my daughter when we presented the warrant articles. It was a little bit of government for her to have in peace. She loved it. She had, you know, was up there, enjoyed hearing and seeing it, and I'm glad we were-
My daughter's had a different reaction.
And I think all the verbiage that I'm hearing through town is that they are plotting the school district and administration.
So supportive.
Yes.
Very supportive, not even so much as with, of course, the percent increase, but even the process. And it was even spoken today at the Doll Man's Group in Northborough.
I think that, I think other, yeah, I think other town groups could learn something from how we start and, you know, we never stop, we just go right into the next one, you know?
Starts next week, right?
Yeah, I know, basically.
And Becky, you're, and Greg, you, both of you are so prepared to answer any and all questions that come across in such a professional way. So, I like to thank you, because you only get a couple of months off, and you're back in for FY '27 in October. But thank you very much for the administration and all the hard work and the faculty and staff that put the budgets together, in principles.
Okay, moving on to approval of grants and donations. We've got a donation of a Ludwig Smeer drum bell kit from Mrs. Carrie Martneck with the approximate value of $300 to the elementary school instrument library, and a donation from the GFWC Northborough Junior Women's Club of $500 towards the purchase of a buddy bench for the playground at Peaslee School.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Joan, seconded by Bryce. Is there any extra? No?
Just thank you. We're always appreciative.
Thank you so much, we do. Donations do help us with our, donations and grants do help us with our budget. And so, thank you very much, Ms. Martneck and the Northborough Junior's Women's Club. Yes, Bryce?
I just, it dawned on me, but like, I don't think anyone in the community has any idea. I mean, we talked about the PTO, we talked about some other stuff, but I don't think anybody has any idea just how many things get donated to the school that are of good value. So, like, at some point, it'd be great to articulate that out, because it's a lot, like, it is.
Yeah, we get some great stuff.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor of approving these donations? It is unanimous. MSBA update, Peaslee Building Project and the roof.
So, the Peaslee Building Committee continued to meet, and Becky took the lead on requests for services- for services for owner's project manager. She's been working with the Peaslee Building Committee. She recently received feedback from the RFS, from DESI, she incorporated that out and actually was able to post it in the central registry yesterday. Today.
Today, I saw the email today.
So now we'll, we'll wait to schedule interviews and that will be the next task of the Peaslee Building Committee. So nice work, Becky.
The roof repair, we've got the approval, so.
So now it's waiting for, for MSBA to assign us an OPM and to go through the schematic design feasibility.
Next on the agenda is the enrollment superintendent report.
Yeah, so we are monitoring enrollment very closely as we prepare for the next academic year. I will share that kindergarten enrollments, we do have space, but it is, you know, closer to the ceiling of class size than we, we have been in the past, so it's something we're keeping an eye on closely. But Sheila and Keith and Nancy and Cheryl are keeping a close eye, so at this point in time, we are, we are fine. And then I'll turn it over to Becky for the FY '25 budget line item transfers and general fund expenditure reports.
So I did provide the committee an overview of the budget in their packet. I will just highlight a few key points. So as of April 30th, our ending balance was 124,035, which is .43% of the total operational budget. That is a decrease of about 278,000 from the prior month. There are really two function codes that are driving that change. The first is we actually have purchased some new math textbooks for each of the elementary schools, and so that purchase did occur over the month of April. And then we also have encumbered money for a new evaluation for a special education student as well as an encumbrance in anticipation of some year-end expenditures in the tuition out, special education category. There is one line item that is new and is showing as over budget and that is substitute for professional development. It's $315 over budget, and that is due to a timing issue, payroll was running their payroll at the same time. I do anticipate that that number has since gone into the positive since this report was run, but that is the one line item that is new. So at this point, I would ask the committee to vote to accept the monthly general fund report as of April 30th until audited.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Bryce, seconded by Kristen, any discussion?
I love the fact that we're, we're focusing in on budget lines that are $315 over that are likely to go back. Right? So let's just, just thank you, right? Amazing work as always.
It's a lot.
And so does the motion also have to extend to approve the function code listed above that are over?
So it's really at the committee's discretion, it was over at that point in time, but like I said, it.
It's likely to go back, I wasn't going to.
So you could approve it in case it goes over in the future, but I would, I would say we don't have to vote on it and then I could report on it if it becomes a permanent over.
Permanent thing, because this is just like a one-time thing. Versus the other ones.
Those are.
Were more substantial.
We knew that those were going to be over.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the table. We don't need to amend that. Any discussion? No? All right, all in favor? Unanimously pass it, thank you so much. School committee member reports. We can start down at the table, Kristen?
Wellness committee meets tomorrow and nobody else has met, so I want to make some amendments.
Nothing to report.
Field trips.
Great.
More field trips, they're awesome.
We need more.
And I have a retirement plan now. Volunteer for field trips.
Yeah.
All the cool places you go.
Well, that's, my friend is a nurse and she always volunteers.
Yeah.
To go as a parent volunteer, but she's also a nurse, so I think it's like a two-for-one when she gets to go to her kid's school.
More field trips.
Yeah, I know, I was lucky to be able to go on a few field trips throughout the years with the kids and, I mean, it really is.
I've got to do two this year. Very special.
That's really cool. So member report for me, my thing is with NSPAC, going the distance awards, going to be coming up soon. I believe all the nominations have been closed and in, and it's May 22 at 6:00 PM. I know Joan goes almost every year, I go, it's a, it's a really great experience, it's really fun, so if you can carve out a little bit of time in your schedules to go, it's, it's really a great experience to see and watch.
It is. Do you know when the Titan Games will be?
It's actually, is it, yeah, it's actually going to be postponed to the fall. The springs, they've had challenges with the springs, with the fields and things like that, and it's usually really hot and sunburning stuff, so they decided for a number of reasons to shift it to the, to the fall. So this year, technically, there wasn't one, I don't know, because of those things. But the people who are graduating and moving on will be recognized and welcome to come back for it. So no kid will be left behind or not recognized for it, so they will all be able to be a participant. Right.
The only update I have is tomorrow evening is the LPAC meeting at 6:30 at Algonquin Regional High School. And then on Friday, May 9th, you will receive an email from the chairs of the union for the evaluation process to begin.
Do you say Friday, May 9th, as in like a couple of days from now?
Yeah.
There is just one other thing. So it came to my knowledge at the, on April 8th, that with the vacant position on the select board, the town charter says that the moderator and the chair of the school committee, along with the four select board members, are to jointly appoint a new select person. So I've been dealing with that, and that's all I'm going to say.
Let us know how we can support both you and the community.
Thank you. There, there have been, the applicants closed yesterday and there have been eight applicants.
Eight?
Eight.
But nothing, we're not having revealed yet to.
I, I believe the select board have some agenda coming out on Thursday, so I'm assuming it would be in there.
So you don't have any date when there'd be an interview process, first election process?
I believe they're saying it's going to be on Monday.
It's Monday coming up.
The date before the election.
So it's Tuesdays.
All right. Education policy, none at this time, policy development.
Just a good quick comment around policy development. So we did not receive any feedback on the policies that the combined school committee had first reads on. So if you can, if you have anything to send it my way. And then the plan is to bring those policies for a second read at the combined.
Personnel distribution.
So in your package, the personnel report, I'll just highlight Kyle Parson. So he did take a position for Birmingham State John Stocker Institute to do some trainings. Our intent is not to fill that position, to let the hiring of Whitson take place and then see what we need to do, if anything.
That position though, was it funded through our budget or was it funded through the food service? So it's not like.
So one way to look at it is if we don't fund that position, the $108,000 now goes up to.
Should goes up to whatever that is, yeah. Yeah.
But we are in a holding pattern.
Communications, none at this time. Action on open minute meeting of April 8th, or April 2nd, sorry, and the actions on special open meeting minutes, they were very long and extensive. Very thorough, of April 28th. 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Joan, seconded by Bryce, any discussion?
Yes, don't you think it's a little comical? In the event that town meeting goes more than one night.
It is now, it used to be, it used to be speculative. Now it's a guarantee.
Yeah, a week ago.
All in favor?
Tonight, we were sitting at the.
I'd like to commend Lauren on those minutes.
Nice minutes.
Nice minutes. Nice job.
No.
When people go in, minutes is what to perform against.
It kind of, it kind of leads into our future agenda item, election of officers in June, don't all go jump in to wannabe secretary because it's such a. I mean.
You passed the test, Karen.
So our future agenda items, we have, for the record, that did pass unanimously, I don't know if I picked that up on recording, but, our future agenda items, retiree recognition. How many do we?
I think four.
Four. Light year.
Four what?
Retiree recognition. Election of officers, election of superintendent union, curriculum instruction review process, school committee roles.
Could we, could we add maybe just a brief overview of the contracts that'll need to be negotiated in '26, '27, or '25, '26?
Getting organized.
Okay. It'd be great to just have that as a, not, not like, small, very short presentation would be fantastic.
Speaking of contracts, the school committee roles for like the volunteering type thing. When we get to that, I do love a good contract negotiation, collective bargaining, I do really love it, so I hope to be able to stay on that.
Hey Greg, are we still doing the IBP training on June 9th?
Yes.
And you head down from four to seven? So if you don't do the training, you cannot do.
You can't even do it.
Okay.
Not enough.
And is that going to be just Northborough, is it going to be all of us together?
Is that a Monday night? Okay, that should be all right.
And where are we going to be doing the training?
Most likely at Algonquin, and dinner will be provided.
Okay.
Bring food to Algonquin. So that's just Northborough, Southborough, not Algonquin? Are they doing theirs separate?
We're negotiating separately. Doing IBP training together with Southborough, they have a different IB facilitator, we have a different IBP facilitator.
Meaning Joan, Lois?
Lois is, we're thinking forward to the future around, you know, trying a different facilitator, Lo, this is probably Lois.
Lois is retiring potentially.
How long has she been with us?
She was the MTA.
Okay. Okay.
Another future agenda item, maybe just discussing when our summer workshop will be. Put in a plug, it's really hard for teachers, but like first day back in our classrooms all day and then like to come to.
And do a workshop.
And I know like there's principals who are, you know, on the regional committee.
Oh, because it was August 26th last year and you were back in. It was my wedding anniversary, so.
It's just, I mean, I know people, you know people will be back from vacations, but I know a lot of people are in the.
Would your recommend, would your recommendation to be like earlier in August or?
Or even just that week before.
Mid-August.
Yes.
I was just curious.
Because I, I have also noticed we've had sort of low attendance the last couple of years, so maybe just putting some thought into what would work for people.
There was a survey.
Well, definitely, yeah, there was, but we can definitely work on not having too many meetings that first week.
Just a lot, when you're in an air-conditioned building all day, and you're like, just want to crawl on the bed.
I'll look for a Saturday.
Oh, perfect.
Kelly? I just have one thing to pass out, I should have done it during sharing, but I just found it.
You know what, that was for communications and then that passed.
I went Saturday to the reenactment, not the reenactment.
Oh, yeah, I heard about that at the library, the 250th.
Yeah, it was really nice, so this explains the witness houses, because I saw the signs and had to do, so that's just on the witness houses and. Greg, I bought these two books, I thought they just printed this, but this was printed from 1976, but it's all about the history of Northborough.
You thought that they just printed?
No, I did, yes, and they go, I went to a store, they said, no, this is old, this is 1970, 1976, and I'm like, I thought they just printed it with the money. But that they were allotted, but. But you know, it's, they said that they reached out to the schools and teachers are doing that as part of, I know it's not in the curriculum frameworks, the Northborough's history, but coming up with the 250th anniversary, so.
My mom gave me, when I was pregnant with my daughter, she gave me a birthing book, like a child thing, and I'm reading it, and I didn't look at the publication, and she's like, this is the best, but you've got to go buy, and, and it says, it talks about, you know, there's this new virus, this thing that's going around, it was talking about AIDS. So then I was like, this new thing, this is in 2011, right? And I'm like, uh, so I look at the, the date, it was like from the 70s, I was like.
Also told you to put a baby on a stomach.
Brand new, yeah, I know.
Against the pillow.
Brand new, yeah, exactly. Lots of blankets, cuddle them up at night with lots of blankets, I'm like, great, Mom, thanks. No, this is so great, thank you so much, Joan, this is, I love this. All right, approval of bills and payrolls, we are good to go on that. Audience sharing, none. No other business that legally come before the meeting. I would just like to say, before the end of the meeting, I know our elections are next.
One, Tuesday.
No, no.
Oh, ours, oh.
Our.
June 4th.
Our appointment, yeah, elections for us are June 4th. I have greatly enjoyed being your chair for the past three years, but I am ready to pass the baton, so.
You've been awesome.
Thank you. I, I hope that someone else would like to do it.
We've all been, we've all been really lucky, we've all been really lucky to have you.
As I said, I've loved doing it, I've enjoyed it, but I am, I'm glad to be passing it on to.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly.
You did a great job.
Seriously.
And Kelly, I've seen you really grow into this position.
Thank you, Joan, you've seen me grow.
Yeah, you were soft with the gavel at first, yeah.
And now, I mean, you know, in all the, no, you really have, and even in the communications and how you keep up to date with us through the emails and everything like that, so, and ask for our opinions, so thank you, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Three chairs.
I've, I've been trying to be the servant to the committee, I've tried to do it. That's what the title, move for that for people. I am going to have a motion to adjourn at 9:20.
Second.
I think I heard Joan first.
No, we were, give it to Kristen.
Okay, so a motion by Lauren, seconded by Kristen, we are adjourned at 9:20 PM.
Should be low.
Oh. All in favor? Christ, look at you stepping off knowing, babe.
I like that person.